Commissioner Johnston?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Rossi?
I'm here.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yep.
Commissioner Weekly?
Here.
Commissioner Yanis?
Here.
Mayor Cates?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Are there any changes to the agenda? Here and none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rossi, second by Commissioner Yanis. All in favor with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here and none. Motion passes.
Resolutions, item number one. Authorizing the Key West Girl Softball Travel Teams, 8U, 10U, and 12U to conduct a co-ed softball and cornhole tournament fundraiser at the Wickersfield Complex on Saturday, May 3, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., pursuant to terms and conditions set forth by the Office of the City Manager, granting a special event permit pursuant to Section 6-86 of the Code of Ordinances from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 3, 2014, authorizing the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages on the date and during the hours stated above.
Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion approved by Commissioner Rossi, second by Commissioner Wardlow. All in favor with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here and none. Motion passes.
Let's hope it goes like this all night.
Ordinances, first reading. Item number two. An ordinance of the City of Key West, Florida, amending Chapter 18 Businesses, Article 2, Alcoholic Beverages, Division 2, Entertainment License, to amend Section 18-56 regarding definitions by amending 18-57 to provide for the location of speakers, by amending Section 18-59 to update definitions, by amending Section 18-60 to increase the number of violations before an entertainment license may be revoked or suspended, providing for severalability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, providing for an effective date.
Anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Before I call the speakers up, I have an announcement. Please help us to improve the efficiency of our meetings by being in close proximity to either podium when you have signed up to speak on an agenda item. As a reminder, you are speaking only on the agenda item you have signed up for. Please be respectful and confine your comments to this agenda item only. Please state your name and address and address your comments to the chair. You have three minutes, and a ring will sound.
Oh, boy.
When you have 30 seconds left, please wrap up your comments and leave the podium when your three minutes are up. And most importantly, please, no applause after speakers. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good job, Jerry.
Very good.
Sloan Baszinski, and then Danny Hughes.
Sloan Baszinski, 1711 Seminary Street, Key West Commissioners and Mayor. I would like to go to the Water Quality Conference over at NOAA, and I might tread a little bit over into the second item, so I won't speak to it, if that's okay. Mainly, though, my concern, I'm concerned about right now, I think this ordinance is mostly for show. I think the enforcement provisions are mostly for show, and in the end, it would just be something to mount on the wall, but I don't think you're going to see anything change. And I bumped into Jim Young, code enforcement head, out on the neighborhood the other day. He was closing down a job that was not permitted. And we talked about this. He said he'd called New Orleans and talked to them about their noise ordinance down around their similar area to ours here, Duval Street, and they have a more stringent ordinance, but they never enforce it. I mean, they're never, the response was, "We're going to enforce a noise ordinance on Bourbon And I talked to Mark Rossi yesterday, and I've talked to Jim, and I still think what you ought to do is just import some redneck justice from Alabama. And adopted it into the CONC Justice Code, which everybody knows actually exists, but it's not in writing. And so, when somebody is disrespectful with their bar, or their joint, or whatever it is, you shut them down for the rest of the day and the night. No ticket, no cops, other than to shut them down, no lawyers, no judges, no fines, and they can open up the next day. And if they are disrespectful again, and this is, they've got to be really disrespectful, okay? You can't use this as a weapon. Use it like spanking them when they're really out of line, and you shut them down again. And finally, they're going to get the message, because that's a whole day and night's revenues they're losing. That's the fine. You don't do anything to them, but just shut them down. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Danny?
Danny Hughes? Yes, when I called the two speakers, the second speaker just needs to be ready to speak after the first speaker.
My apologies, Madam Clerk. I'm a new kid in town here, okay?
Quite all right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Danny Hughes. My wife, Moore, and I own Two Friends Patio Restaurant. When Moore and I arrived here, after only visiting here about 60 or 80 times since 1998 and falling in love with Key West, we wanted to be part of the community, part of you all. Any issue, as your enforcement will dictate, between Two Friends and our neighbors, some of whom you all have heard complaints before, evaporated. The ownership of Two Friends, the ownership across the street, I'll say Island Dogs, work together, and we've settled our issues amongst ourselves. We've upgraded our sound system to remain in compliance, because part of our due diligence was that we understood what the playing ground was, what, you know, what we had to live up to. We've upgraded our sound system, because we host a weekly radio show. We have karaoke four nights a week. We have live music about five times a week to entertain our cruise ship people who've requested it. The only issue we have is with the 15-foot interior setback. We're in an old building. You know, we don't have the luxury of 15 feet, and those of you all who've been by have seen, we've upgraded the system where the speakers are pointed inward. We have four speakers surrounding our area, because we don't want two speakers blasting them all the way across. We've not had a complaint. We've not been an issue here. That 15-foot setback would take all those issues and put them in jeopardy, and as a businessperson, you can't say you'd have to rely on a waiver. That is not the way to do things. In closing, we've worked with our people here, and you've mentioned New Orleans. I'm from New Orleans. I served on the Port Commissioner. They don't, they don't enforce the ordinances they have there. My opinion, and I'll say it for the record, Key West does a hell of a lot better job of what you all do than New Orleans does what they do. Take it from someone who's been there. But it's kind of a shame, because we find it, it's kind of like, Moore and I feel like we're living down the street from someone who has 14 kids, and someone's asking me to get a vasectomy. Sorry. In any case, I appreciate you all's indulgence. We would ask that you all reconsider the portion for that interior setback of 15 feet. Our speakers are faced inward, they're right on the street, we have never had a complaint, and we thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
Joel Nelson, and then Dallas Dokton.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, been playing live music in this town since about 1980, and there's a tradition of daytime live music in this town. And like the gentleman just said, the thing about putting the speakers 15 feet within the buildings is an issue I want to address immediately, because I'm sure all the other issues, as far as meter wadering, and meter, all that will be discussed. But today, for example, I walked into my job, start playing at 1:00. There was an eight-person 50th birthday celebration going on, and I can tell you right now that they were louder than the daytime decimals that are allowed at the property line measurement than, than even before the music started. What I do, I turn the speakers in towards me, so I could even hear myself. So, turning the speakers in and having them facing in, like the last gentleman said, is the solution to that. That 15-feet thing, and having to get a waiver, good luck. When the song, when our festival comes along, and all those venues, is everybody going to have to get a waiver? It just doesn't make common sense. Also, the hawkers that stand, I know they're standing in the doorway, and they claim free speech, but if speakers have to be 15 feet in, do they have to stand back 15 feet within the store to say $5, everything $5? To me, that's much more annoying than music. So, that's what I wanted to bring up. All the other issues, I'm sure, will be, will be considered, and thank you for your
Hi, I'm Dallas Doktor, 3391 Eagle Avenue. Commissioner Mayor, I'd just like to point out the obvious. That 15-foot speaker limitation is both unnecessary and redundant. If a business is in compliance with the noise ordinance otherwise, which I know we're going to pass tonight, there is absolutely no governmental interest in encroaching on private businesses' practices on how they place their speakers, especially since we're going to have to be in compliance with the noise ordinance anyway. So this is just completely an unnecessary ordinance, and I'm done.
Gary W., and then Sherri Pogue.
My name is Gary W. Eck, is the last name. This, I live at 1021 Watson Street, but let me say this for the record. This is one of the worst-sounding PA systems I think I've ever heard in my life. All right, I got a great letter from Sean. You've done amazing work. You've kept them from doing some things that probably would have been more illegal than what they're trying to do now. We really, I got to say, I'm against the 15-foot rule. For one reason, if we're going to be measuring it with decibels, why do we need to move the speakers in? If we move the speakers in, it makes sense to me, they're going to turn them 15% up. That's about all I got to say on this. I'm totally against moving speaker systems. I do like the idea that we originally said, Mayor, that we aim them in away from the street and get a control level here. I'll be back to speak on the other things.
Hi, everybody. Keeping it short but sweet today. First off, Sean Smith, you did a wonderful job. I read your email. I think it's just incredible, because the first time somebody's going to get ticketed, it's never going to go through court. It's unconstitutional. We're going to put the speakers 15 feet back. It's just not going to work. Do that with the T-shirt shops. They're louder than most bars. I walk down Duval Street, it's crazy. All you hear is the music blasting from these T-shirt shops, and it's noise. That's actual noise. It's not music. We need to have a sound ordinance that's going to protect the residents, enhance business, and keep everybody happy. These musicians need to make money. This is their livelihood. We need to keep the speakers inside. 15-foot is crazy. That's absolutely crazy. It's not going to help the situation, it's just going to make it worse. Thank you.
Maureen Johnson, 2322 Seidenberg, for Willie T's, 525 Duval. Tonight, it is very likely that we will have a new sound ordinance in place that will measure the sound levels from the property line of businesses in the commercial district with entertainment licenses. Putting the cart before the horse just a little bit, dealing with this issue before the other issue, but as such, it would become unnecessary to require such establishments to move all speakers in 15 feet from the plane of any open door or window. It would create an undue burden and hardship for all of us affected by such an ordinance. We all have unique properties, and some of us don't even have windows, doors, or walls, or ceilings for that matter. We would all have some form of hardship or another based upon the dynamics of our properties. Most importantly, by creating the new sound ordinance, establishments will either be in compliance or not at their respective property lines, regardless of where the placement of our speakers or how many speakers we have. It should be up to each individual establishment incorporating in individual due diligence as to how many speakers and where we need to place them based upon meeting the compliance of the new sound level standards. Everyone is going to have to make some adjustments, I'm sure, but to mandate a 15-foot requirement seems like an overreaching, burdensome law. It seems that there could be a much more less intrusive way to handle this requirement by perhaps simply requiring any and all speakers within the outermost perimeter of the premises to be turned inward toward the establishment. Therefore, please withdraw this unnecessary requirement from this ordinance, as it will become a moot issue with the passage of the new sound ordinance. Please listen to over the 700 levels fired, filed on record, that was not announced, by the way, that agree with this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, there were 703 form letters received in opposition at the Clerk's office. That's all. The speakers have signed up for item number two.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may? Would you like to present this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I'd like to talk about a couple of things that, that were brought up. One is that somebody mentioned the T-shirt shops and their requirements. Well, that's where this came from, and the T-shirt shops do have a 15-foot rule that has to face inward, and I've asked code enforcement to make sure that's being enforced. That's number one. Number two, I've visited recently with some of the, some of the businesses, some of the entertainment venues, that I wasn't sure how their speakers were set up, or where they were set up or anything. And I noticed, and you're right, 15 feet wouldn't work, you know? However, remember that when this was brought up the first time, I don't know, a few weeks ago, I guess it's been now, that the city attorney said that we, you know, that there was, I asked if there was an existing ordinance, and he said it only dealt with the retail aspect of, of the speakers and the placement of those. So, I asked him to bring forward this ordinance, so we could have something to discuss. That's where the 15 feet came from, because it's in that existing ordinance. I don't have a problem with decreasing that to about, to five feet. I think most of the businesses would in fact be able to comply at five feet. My main thrust is to, one, have the music, have the sound, be maintained within the perimeter of the property line. Everyone walking down the street doesn't want to have to listen to, listen to whatever sounds coming out from whatever establishment it might be. So, I'm willing to reduce the setback to five feet, keep the variance procedure in there, because there could be some hardships that would require a variance that should be able to be applied for. Because, you know, we all know that different properties are different sizes, and they have different challenges, so I think that would give everyone an opportunity, in fact, to do that. So, I'm going to ask for that, for that amendment to five feet with the, with the speakers still facing in, to try to maintain the sound within the perimeter of the property.
So you ask for amendment first?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
Do you have a second?
I don't know if there's any, I guess, I guess that needs to be a motion?
Yes.
So I will move to amend the ordinance to five feet with the speakers facing in, still with the application for the variance procedure, if it's difficult to comply with.
Do you have a second? I don't hear a second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, then I'll make a motion for the, on the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance. Do I have a second? Is there a second? I hear no second. Motion dies for lack of a second. City Attorney?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I would recommend that you focus on the second paragraph, actually Section 3 mediation, because it changes the definition to unreasonably excessive noise, which then corresponds to the main sound ordinance that you have later this evening, so your ordinances are internally consistent. Also, the commission directed me to change a provision, essentially three strikes and you're out, rather than the two, which is found in Section 18-60A, changing two to three times before someone can have their entertainment license subject to revocation or suspension. So again, if, if the commission does not desire to do the 15-foot setback, I would recommend that you vote on changing the terminology, and then, again, changing the one, I'm sorry, changing two to three, as far as the number of violations that could result in action on an entertainment license.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of the city attorney, please?
Yes. Commissioner Yanis?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
I think we covered this ground before, but when we say somebody's license could be suspended for a week, for a month, for a year, I think there needs to be some definition as to how long you're going to suspend a license. And likewise, you're going to revoke a license? Are you talking about a lot of money to revoke a license? That seems like a very permanent solution. So again, whatever this commission wants, I'm for, but I think we need to clarify that as to what that means.
Commissioner Yanis, that provision exists in your current ordinance, and there are defined requirements before any action can be taken on a license. This commission asked me to increase the number of violations before such action can be taken, so the, the ability to revoke or suspend exists in the current ordinance as it stands today.
Okay, but, but can we get some sort of definition as to for how long it would be suspended for?
Again, it's based upon a series of factors, and it's at the discretion of the city manager, taking into consideration those factors. They have a hearing opportunity to be heard, consider the license holder's record of noise violations, the seriousness and recurrence of the violation, the degree of disturbance on persons or neighboring property, and the license holder's record in mediation that's also provided for before anything can be taken, any action can be taken on a license.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Johnston?
Sean, I think we should explain at this point, though, that, that being cited is not one of these violations. I mean, being cited only means that code compliance has said you're in violation, and you have this amount of time to correct that violation. So three citations would mean that they've gone through those actions and have decided on their own free will not to correct the violation.
Or they have those continuing violations that come before a special magistrate, and there's a determination that they are in fact in violation. It's not just, you're right, it's not a simple citation by a code officer.
But it's not a citation, right.
Correct. It's an actual finding that they have violated the ordinance on three separate, as it stands today, two separate occasions.
Right, okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Wardlow?
Sean, so we could take the 15 feet completely out and just go with the rest of the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
It's all right with Commissioner Weekly, I'd like to amend that, to take the 15, everything out of the distance.
Do I have the power to say no?
No.
If you want to.
You have a vote at the end.
You can say whatever you want, really.
I would say, take it out.
One thing, one thing I learned at Catholic school is how to count, so I can, I can count, so.
Be careful, Commissioner, take your microphone away from you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wardlow, it's simply a motion to do that at this point. Because the prior motion failed, so you can suggest any action to this commission that you so desire. So it would be, you'd move to approve with the deletion of the language with respect to the 15-foot setback and everything that is in that paragraph.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve with the setback taken out and everything else remaining the same.
Okay, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Lopez. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Yanis?
I don't know that I, that I'm completely clear. You know, we talked about some different parameters for some different sections of the city, and I think there's still somewhat of a gray area. Sean, if you would shed some light on that, I know that you had a proposal on there.
Yes, sir. That, that would be with respect to the item that you will consider, I believe, next, and has no applicability to this.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second for discussion.
It's already the second by Commissioner Lopez, and we'll start the discussion right now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Rossi? My pleasure.
What are we doing here with this? I'm a little lost on this. This is the 15-feet speaker in the building faced in. I thought we killed that one.
He removed that from the, from the ordinance?
So what's the effect of it?
Commissioner, the city attorney just explained.
Sure. Commissioner Rossi also included within this particular ordinance was an increase in the number of violations from two to three, for which a entertainment license could be revoked or suspended. Also included in this ordinance was changing the language to unreasonably excessive noise to match up with the definition section of the ordinance that you'll consider later.
Why don't we just all roll this into the one ordinance that we're going to consider later?
Well, because the other ordinance you'll consider later is a second reading of the ordinance. This is a standalone entertainment license section of your code, which is distinct from that section of the code which you'll consider later.
Commissioner Johnston?
Commissioner Weekly, I fully understand why you have the 15 feet in there, is that, you know, you're hoping that everybody will achieve compliance based on the 15 feet, but I think many of the speakers had a very good point, that, that our overarching goal here is for compliance, and to meet the parameters of the noise ordinance, and how they do that is really up to them. So, I would agree that we remove the 15-foot language and leave everything else intact in the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Wardlow?
The reason I'm bringing it up is because I think it's just a conflict with the other ordinances, because we're going to be, you're going to be on the, on the property line anyway, so if, you know, if this is 15 feet or not 15 feet, you're still going to be in violation of the ordinance if it doesn't work, so.
Is there any other discussion? Call to roll, please.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
No.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Ordinances, second reading, public hearing, item number three. An ordinance of the City of Key West, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Environment, Article 4 entitled Sound Control by adding Section 26-189 Purpose, adding Section 26-190 Findings of Fact, amending Section 26-191 Definitions, amending Section 26-192 to amend and clarify unreasonably excessive noise prohibitions. Amending Section 26-193 to clarify and amend exceptions to the Sound Control ordinance. Amending Section 26-194 to clarify citation, procedure, and penalties, adding Section 26-199 to provide for temporary waivers, providing for severalability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, providing for an effective date.
You want to state the letters first?
Yes. There were 25 letters received in support of the ordinance, 46 letters received in opposition, 676 form letters received in opposition, and also a petition to preserve middle and upper Duval Street and surrounding area.
Okay.
How many names are on the petition?
Pardon me? One. One. Yes. Yes, one name.
No.
No, no.
How many names on the petition?
On the petition, there was one name. The petition to preserve middle and upper Duval Street areas.
I know there's more than that, because I received, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I know there's more than that, because I received.
Commissioner Weekly?
I received emails from people that said they had signed the petition, and they were in support of, of the language on the petition. You know, a lot of those, a lot of those folks are here.
This is the only thing that I received. I received it from Paul Hayes, Rent Key West Vacation, who has 78 units, sleeping units. That is the only thing that I received.
She has a list of the names on the petition there. I think they may have forgot to send that with that letter.
Maybe the attachment didn't, wasn't attached.
They forgot the attachment.
Or didn't go through, or something.
So how many names?
32 guesthouses.
Okay. All right. 32 businesses, 18 guesthouses, 71 residents.
This will be put into the record, this list of names.
Yes. Sloan Baszinski, and then... Sloan Biszinski, and then Judy Martinez. Is Sloan still here or did he leave?
Sloan had to leave.
Okay. After Judy, Tim Weaver.
Judy Martinez, 1020 Emma, 3A. Commissioner Weekly, I'm standing over here so I can look right at you. Thank you for calling me back. On the other night, I held my phone up so that you could hear the music next door and how loud it was. It was so bad that it set two-car sirens off that were 50 feet away with the lights flashing and the beep, beep, beep. And I asked him to please turn his music down, if you want to call it that. My fiancee says it's not music, it's cult, C-U-L-T, because it's not music. You can't dance to it. And it goes on and on and on and on and makes no sense, and it sounds like 30 people speaking pig Latin, and it's just a loud drumbeat in the background. And I asked him one day, what religion is he? Because I'm a Jew and he knows it, and he hates my guts. He says, I practice Santeria. It is down here. So may I advise everyone that's got a cat and a dog to keep it on a leash? Because I've seen those people cut the heads off of chickens and drink the blood, and you cannot do anything about it. Because in 1993, the Supreme Court says that's a religion. But do they have to do it where I can see them do it? And then he blames me for calling the police. The night I spoke with you, I had to put myself in the bathroom with two walls between us. I slept on the bathroom rug with my dog. I did not call the police on him. I've been up to 1,400 Kennedy, I've been to 301 White Street, I've gone down to talk to the police in person. They said code enforcement does not work between 10:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning. I don't know. But what can they do about that? Nothing. And I have a bad heart. I was starting to get chest pains.
I'm sorry, Judy, could you please stay on topic? We're talking about the noise ordinance.
Okay, so you want me to just continue about, or am I cut off on time?
Okay. No, continue.
Okay. Well, if you possibly can do anything about the noise, call it noise, make sure that you give all landlords housing, government housing, and a copy of everything. Please do that. And use the C scale. Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Tim Weaver, 526 Rose Lane. I'm in favor of Commissioner Weekly's proposed noise ordinance. As long as Section 26I94 remains as it was originally written. And this has to do with defining noise beyond 100 feet of the source of the noise as disturbing and unreasonable as per judgment of the code enforcement officer. I'm assuming that's still in, although I have asked a few commissioners tonight if that's still in there, and it seems to be difficult, as things are marked up now, to determine that. So maybe Shaun could give us an answer to that after my time is up. The other issue for me is that the ordinance is now amended, that codifies into law the noise levels that both lock in the status quo. That is to say, in talking with Jim Young, I've come to realize that the 85 and 95 DBA levels are simply the levels that he found as he moved up and down Duval Street. So the commission is about to lock in the existing levels of noise that everyone has complained about and has resulted in all of this work you're doing on the ordinance. The second thing that concerns me is that you're about to codify into law and make the law of Key West say that the noise levels inside of the bars, the establishments and entertainment places, may exceed the standards of OSHA. And I'm wondering why the commission would want to do that. And if your attorney could look into this matter, it might be instructive to you to think about what the levels of noise are that a workplace may have in order to be safe. And this is prolonged exposure. It's not just hearing a truck go by or a motorcycle go by. This is hours of exposure. And in some cases, apparently, workers in the bars have taken it upon themselves to wear earplugs, as I do at night, so that I can sleep because of the noise from Fat Tuesday's bar. Time is up?
30 seconds left.
Okay. Now, I know the performers are worried about their jobs, and I don't blame them. But if the entertainment is to entertain and not to advertise, then the players can play at lower decibel levels and still make a very good living, still satisfy their customers, still entertain the people that are in these establishments. If the idea, however, is to try to draw in people from several blocks, then the city has a right to regulate that.
Thank you, your time is up.
Of advertising.
Sir? 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 Sir, could you come back? Commissioner Lopez, would I like to ask you a question?
Sir, when you first began speaking, you mentioned one of the sections. Which section was that again?
Yeah, it's 126194. And it has to do with determining whether there's a violation based on noise more than 100 feet from the source. When a complaint is made by a residential property owner.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We needed a number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I please remind you, please no applause after speakers. Bill Blue, and then Dallas Doctor.
My name is Bill Blue, 1801 North Roosevelt. Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to speak in general terms about just the music industry that I'm in Key West. I've been involved with for so long, and I want to start with a story. About 32 years ago, I was playing in Old Havana docks. And a guy was in there with his girlfriend, and he came up to him and he said, "I'll give you $100 if you'll turn down." And I said, "Give me $300 and I'll quit." And he actually pulled out the $300 bucks. And so it was a real dilemma because I didn't think he would, but he did. So we hemmed and hawed for a while, and everybody left the bar. And bartenders came up and waitresses, who I ended up marrying later, but she said, "What about us? You know, you got your deal, what about us?" And more than anything, I want to just talk about the music industry down in Key West. This is a CD that I just, I didn't even know I was on, but I am. And it has a lot of Keys musicians, Howard Livingston, Barracuda, and it's put out by the TDC. And they take it around the world and give it out. And it says right at the top, it says, "It's a fact. We are in a golden age of music right now in the Florida Keys. The live music scene has exploded in the last year, 10 years, in which it has." And I want to bring your attention to this book here. I don't know if you've seen it, but if you haven't, you should go purchase it. It's called The Soul of Key West. And it's about the music industry, and it has different people in it. And here's, who's this guy? Clayton Lopez, there he is. But more than anything, 30-some years ago, I would play next door. And on a good August, hot August night, we could play frisbee on Duval Street, and that's a fact. And I'm sure Mark and Tony knows about that. I could walk to my house all the way from here, I mean, from here to 1100 block Duval Street, not see one person or one car or anything. Now, the town has changed, and I understand Jimmy Weekly's point on this. It has changed. The town has become noisy. There were general, there's places, there's a few places in this town, we all know who they are, that have been having music for 25, 30, some 40 years, and they never seem to have any problems. But then there's some newcomers, and I hate to say it, but newcomers, and all of a sudden they have these huge problems. They have no investment in, I mean, no, you know, emotional investment in community. They want to make the money and split, and they don't care. And I think in any ordinances pertaining to live music, and remember that a lot of people make their living in this industry. It is an industry. It's a destination now. You have the songwriters, you have that meeting in the mines where people wear those funny hats.
All right, Bill, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Dallas Doctor, 3391 Eagle Avenue. I'd just like to, first of all, say to all of the commissioners, especially Mayor Cates and Commissioner Yanis, who's been on the right side of this from the very beginning. Commissioner Cates, who's kept his word every step of the way. We appreciate it. I know this has been a difficult task for all of you guys. We appreciate that. I would like to say that nobody is going to be terribly happy. There's a lot of things about this we don't like, specifically the zoning, which is problematic. I think even the decibel levels are, this is not the time or place to talk about them. My position at this point is to say that I will support you passing this ordinance tonight, provided that the amendment is passed to change the restriction from 4:00 PM and lift it at 10:00 AM, because if that's not amended and adopted, a lot of us will be out of work. And I've heard from many of you that this ordinance came to life as a result of complaints. But on the record, there's not a single complaint about music between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. So there must be some other reason not to adopt that change. So I support the amendment. I want to be a good neighbor, again, with that change.
All right, thank you.
Gary W. Eek, and then Susan Haskell.
This one at least has some volume level. That one's horrible. Gary Eck, Sound Man From Hell. I live at 1021 Watson Street. I am an audio engineer, sound engineer, and I am a DJ with the X104.9 Key West. That's my shameless plug. Okay, I can go now. Again, we've been here months and months. It's hard for me to get people like Bill Blue here, even Dan Simpson, that have been going through this for, what, 30 years? Same thing over and over. Yes, the residents need to be protected, the bar owners need to be protected, the city needs to be protected because we can't put a law in effect that's going to damage the livelihood of people. But we learned that with the church. We've learned this several times. I am so thankful that Shaun Smith is here with you guys. He really has done his homework. He's dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, and he's done the research into this. A lot of you don't want to see music die in Key West, neither do I. I'm about done building PA systems on Duval Street. I think I'm over it. Yes, there's lots of things we could do to make them better. Smaller speakers, more of them in the lower areas could keep the music within the compounds of a lot of these properties. The problem we're having with some of the outdoor venues is they have nothing to stop the music from going out. Shrubbery, trees, we said all this before, could help containerize the music. Dampening, sound absorption, reflection of any type would help. But I sympathize to the people, especially these people right here, that live next to a venue that pops up, gets loud, and then goes away. It's not a regular, daily problem. It would probably be worse if you had to listen to it every day. But on the other hand, the bars that have been there for 15, 20, 35 years, playing music at a nominal level so the people inside can enjoy it, I don't know what the answer is to fix all this. It has to be treated very carefully, I know that. And probably in the long run, a public referendum would be the way to end this. Come up with a decent law, put it up to vote, and see what the people of Key West would want to do. That's just a suggestion. I can't tell you guys how to do your jobs. I know you're trying. It's a very touchy issue. As you've seen, we've had this room filled around the walls. We could do that anytime we want. But I think this is the core people that believe in what you're trying to do and make it right. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Susan Haskell, 427 Catherine.
Could you get the mic closer to you?
Susan Haskell, 427 Catherine. I live in the 400 block of Catherine Street. This is a block from Duval. I've had the home for 12 years. And a yoga studio opened up and luckily has become very successful. And so people are now coming morning, noon, and night with private classes, public classes, and meetings. So the address is Duval, but the entry is not Duval. The entry is in the alley between the gallery and me, and that's four feet from my bedroom window. I don't have a choice, and I got a small bedroom. I don't have a choice where I put the bed. So people come, and if you look at my height, this is the distance between where people come to do that yoga studio and my bed. Six weeks ago, a bike rental shop opened up across from me on 400 block of Catherine. Several young men, they hang out, laugh, smoke, use language that just curl your hair. They come and go on scooters, they just take off really quickly and noisily down Catherine. They work on scooters, bikes, a truck on the street that they couldn't get going, so now they just rolled it to Thompson Lane, and it just sits there now. Bikes are loaded onto noisy trucks to transport them to local hotels. Tourists gather on Catherine. Sometimes there's up to 10 of them. So they cover up the street, and then the cars go by and honk because they can't get through. And this is a hard-working group. I mean, they're there seven days a week and sometimes nine in the morning until nine at night. So loud music is not the only issue. Whatever department or person is approving businesses in this area really need to find out where the business is actually being held, not just it's a Duval address and so anything goes. We've had one owner on our block now put their house on the market. We're getting kind of tacky. Hark is created by the city charter to preserve the character, integrity, and appearance of the historic preservation districts. I'm a historic house, but I'm not being preserved by what's going on around me. Current entertainment venues like La Di Da and Cork and Stogie, they're respectful of the residential nature. They're great to have in the neighborhood. Most bars, restaurants here in our area are local hangouts, and they don't need loud music to survive. If you have to have loud music to attract patrons, then you're just not really good at your business. Tourists who come to this end, they come for the butterfly aberrity, nice restaurants with no live bands, tasteful galleries, and a respite from the chaos and noise from lower Duval. This is the best place in the world to live, and there's already a lot of noise pollution for a tropical island with thumping car radios, scooters, motorcycles, jet skis, junk tourists going woo-hoo and tooting their scooter horns, delivery and garbage trucks, and bar music. If we stop treating the island and nature with respect, it will not support us. Roosters and other birds are the only sounds we should be hearing in Upper Duval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherri Pogue, and then Maureen Johnson.
Our musicians are the heartbeat of this community. If we stifle them, tell them to keep quiet, it's going to affect, it's a spiral downward effect. It's going to affect this waitstaff, it's going to affect the bars, it's going to affect everybody. It's going to be a huge economic impact on our island. But this is the heartbeat. This is what these guys make their living doing. Some of them don't work another job. They are strictly musicians. They keep us going. Tourists get off the cruise ships. They go to see Mike McLeod at Schooner. They go to see Bill Blue. They go to see their favorite that they've seen for years and years here. That's, putting them on at 4:00 in the afternoon, that's crazy. 10:00 AM, that's a good time, and I'll support it as well if we go to 10:00 AM with this because that's what needs to be done. We have people coming in all the time. 4:00 PM in the afternoon is just ridiculous. I say we go 10:00 AM, keep the musicians working, keep the people happy, and be done with this. Keep the residents happy as well. Thank you.
Maureen Johnson for Willie Teas, 525 Duval. Microphone?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, try again. Tonight, I implore this commission to lift the time restraint proposed from 4:00 PM to 10:00 AM. In order for such a law to be upheld, especially one that involves any form of commerce such as this one, it must
as this one, it must have a rational basis. Understandably, it is logical to conclude that the legislative intent to lower the sound at 3:00 a.m. is because there exists a reasonableness that people are sleeping at that hour. But by 10:00 a.m., it's also reasonable to conclude that most people are awake and bustling, especially in the commercial district. It is further evidenced by other noises that are allowed by 8:00 a.m., such as the leaf blowers and other construction and domestic heavy equipment and tools. At the last meeting, it was proposed to lift the time restraint because there was no rational basis not to. But it was shut down for the sole reason, and I quote, "Other businesses need to operate too." So either those other businesses are all closed by 4:00 p.m. or perhaps those other businesses are simply more important than ours. But in any event, such a reason would not hold up to even the lowest of scrutiny tests, that being a rational basis test. Please indulge me with an analogy. Suppose shop owners that sold groceries in Old Town were told that the only item they could sell from their deli area was toast until 4:00 p.m. every day. The shop owners would say that would be an infringement of their businesses and would be a huge cut into their profits that they should be able to be 100% viable during such a critical part of their daily sales, dependent upon breakfast and lunch sales. But the law says, hey, you can be open. We just told you you can sell toast. But your customers want more than just toast. It's a simple analogy, but it's clear that there is just no rational basis for such a law, just as our customers don't want to see someone trying to play music that they can't even hear over scooters, motorcycles, delivery trucks, and other noises much higher than what is proposed to be allowed before 4:00 p.m. There exists no rational basis. There are no safety reasons, health issues, and certainly not because people are sleeping. You can't pick and choose who gets to prosper between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Laws just don't work that way under the Commerce Clause of the United States Constitution. We ensured that protection. The same would apply regarding to the potential commercial district changes, which some of you may be seeking to amend tonight. The lawsuits that will follow by lost revenues would be an endless and unnecessary expense to the city. Please do the right thing, and please listen to the people, the 676 signed letters of the people asking you to lift this. Please listen to the overwhelming response. Please lift the 4:00 p.m. time restriction to 10:00 a.m. The choice is yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Page Haverty and then Jane Low.
I'm Robert Page Haverty, 1801 Roosevelt over at City Bike, Key West Bike. Lady and I have been walking up and down the Duval quite a bit. We enjoy it. We spend a lot of money there. Everybody in the last few weeks has lowered their levels. The only one I really...we don't go to is Sloppy's. They seem to be high. But Ricks is lower. Hogfish is lower. Willie Teas is lower. They're living it. They're doing it. And what they're saying to all of you is, we need to give like the city manager more money so it can enforce the codes. We need the people to say, hey, you're too loud in that neighborhood, or here, or there, or what. You just can't go to Duval Street and say it's not there. We have it out there on Roosevelt. We have it all over town. We need to do something. City manager's good. Let's get him something that he can work code enforcement from 10:00 o'clock at night to the morning when the noise is up there. Let's get the police out there. The entertainers are doing that. Last two weeks, it's been quiet. On the street, it's been quiet. The bars have been quiet. We've even sat in some of them and not watched their bottles bounce over the table. So people are listening to you. It's up to you now to go through with it. The threats out there, they've done it. They're doing what you want. Everybody knows they're making money. Now, let's just get it all across the board so that you don't have all these other noises from other places, which takes everybody down. Thank you for listening.
When I call your name, would you please be ready to speak?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was running my mouth when my name was called, and I didn't hear it. My name is Jane Low. I live at 1215 Varela Street, and along with my husband, I own the Tropical Inn at 812 Duval. We've owned the inn for 15 years and have had increasing problems for about the past decade with noise from a particular nearby bar, and each year it seems to get worse. The problem has resulted in considerable and documentable loss of revenue in the form of refunds to unhappy guests who haven't been able to sleep, vouchers for future stays, and guests who just aren't going to come back and stay with us as much as they loved our place because of the noise problem. Besides the loss of income, we've suffered a loss of reputation. We've worked extremely hard to build our business to one known for excellence, and it's really demoralizing to have that sullied by a situation caused by an inconsiderate neighbor and an enforcement staff from the city whose ability to control the problem is limited by the questionable enforceability of the noise ordinance that we presently have. Now that we have opened the dialogue to fix this problem, hopefully, I want to share with you a mantra that I used the entire time my kids were growing up, and it was done in an effort to teach them to require excellence in all they do. And that was, do it right or don't do it at all. Since January, when the ordinance revision began, I've attended numerous meetings, and there's all been all this back and forth, and I've kind of teamed up with Marcella Morgan Gregory to hopefully distinguish our area, middle Duval and upper Duval, from lower Duval. We have a completely different character than lower Duval. We don't want to be treated like lower Duval in any fashion. So we put together the petition. You have the summary of it that I gave you, and you'll see that there's a great deal of support. The latest revision of the noise ordinance is on the right track, but it needs a little bit more tweaking. Not huge points, but a few. We need the plainly audible test measured not 100 feet from the parcel that's creating at their property line, but from the source. Many of our parcels are not even 100 feet wide, so you know, that's pretty obvious why we need that. We need more detailed verbiage addressing how is sound that emanates from the lower Duval area going to a force ones who are near the border.
Okay, ma'am. The time's up.
Mr. Mayor, can we hear the rest of her points so she's not...
I just have one more.
Okay. Can we hear that last point?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
And we need to lower the proposed DBC level. I would like to see them returned to the way they were laid out in the very first revision. That's 75 dBA and 77 DBC during the most active part of the day, dropping to 65 dBA and 75 DBC during the sleeping hours. I would suggest that that reach that lower level at midnight and pick up again at 10:00 in the morning. Thank you all for the efforts you're putting into this. I really do appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Kenyatta Arlington and then Elle Kirsten Heads.
Yeah, hello. Testing. Mic check. One, two, three. Check, 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 mic. You notice that we have to use electronic equipment here too, so everybody can be heard. My name is Kenyatta Arrington. I live at 1201 First Street in Key West, and I'd like to thank you for giving this opportunity to speak. I've never been much of a Ronald Reagan fan, but something about Ronald Reagan, he did make some good points, how he felt what government's role should be. And one of those things that I admired about Ronald Reagan, his belief that government was far too much involved into the business of the people with regulations, laws, and in the end of the day, a lot of these laws and regulations seem to handicap businesses and the people who run the businesses, therefore hurting the people who are employed by those businesses who provide incomes for themselves. And we all realize, especially businessmen, understand that business is very competitive, especially if you have somebody right across the street or next to you who has the same exact service as you. So what's the difference between you being crowded and him being empty? So there's a lot of things that I think that the city needs to consider. And one of the most important things that I've noticed throughout this whole entire proceeding, that the city of New Orleans did it very scientifically. They hired an acoustical engineering firm to analyze the entire spectrum from everywhere, from everybody. This way, they had some scientific data that they can analyze and come to a very good logical conclusion, rather than just shooting-from-the-hip type analogy from one person's complaint, another person's admiration. So if you want to do this effectively, I think that's the best thing to do, is hire a firm that can analyze the whole spectrum of noise everywhere in the specific areas that you have complaints from. And I don't know if any of you have noticed that most of the people that have complained about noise has come from the subway-for-bass clubs with the boom, 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 boom constantly. There's a big difference between subway-for-bass music and live music. Live music, as I'm sure Mr. Lopez knows, it fluctuates. It's a live band. It doesn't have the boom, 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 boom. And a lot of these places were approved by somebody in the first place to be there, like Fat Tuesdays. I'm going to name names. And other places, they have the constant boom, boom, boom noise. Most of the places that play music in Key West, it's mellow, it's cool, it's not AC/DC, it's not Kiss, it's not metal music. It's real relaxing, cool music that most people enjoy, sort of like Jimmy Buffett or whatever, all classic rock and roll. So I think what we need to do is stop this political reactionary solutions to the problems that we face and do something that's more scientific and hire a firm that can give you the correct information that you're seeking. And thank you very much. And thank you for taking away our rights as street musicians. Now, we don't enjoy any kind of amplification while everybody else does. That's unconstitutional and biased and discriminatory.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Heads, and I represent Duval House, which is an inn located at 815 Duval Street. I also live here at 814 Duval Street, across the street from Duval House. And I would like to say that there...many of us are here because we'd like to preserve middle and upper Duval, as Jane Low mentioned. We've been here for...Duval House has been here for well over 25, 30 years as well, as long as many of the musicians have been here. And we totally respect their right in the entertainment district, the core entertainment district, as Stephen was so brilliant to point out, that there is a core entertainment...I mean, Sean was so brilliant about, there is a core entertainment district, and I think we recognize that. And then there's a commercial district, which we're part of. We all respect the musician's right to play and earn a living, but we house the people that pay for all of our livings. And those people have a right to come into an area if they wish, and many of our guests, after enjoying all the music all night, all the craziness of lower Duval, they want to come back to middle and upper Duval and have a good night's sleep. They want to have a relaxing day the next day. We happen to have almost half an acre where people can just lie out and relax. They feel as though it's an oasis. And like Jane, we've lost a lot of revenue also, a significant amount of documentable revenue for money that we've had to return to guests due to complaints about noise at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning because people go beyond what they're supposed to do, and enforcement has been a difficult issue. And also future stay credits that we've had to give out, which is a loss of revenue. So we have two other districts here, I mean, that need to be paid attention to even though they are commercial districts. We earn a living also. We provide a service also. We house the people, as I said, that seek out the entertainment during the earlier part of the evening, that being before 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. And what we're asking, I'm not going to repeat it, but if you could just document for me the points that Jane made, those last four points, because that's why we're standing here, to maintain the plainly audible test, the original one, and the three other points that she made about the lower bass levels and taking an accurate measurement. We are less than 100 feet away from some of these places, so 100 feet from the edge of the property is not doable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Patrick Skecher and then Susan Cardenas.
Patrick Skecher, 645 United, Unit 2. I would just like to say the main concern I have is still the bringing the 4:00 provision down to 10:00 a.m. because it's...I think it's very unreasonable to have those kind of sound restrictions extend up to 4:00 p.m. when traffic is as loud as it is and delivery trucks are as loud as they are. You know, Zach Seemiller made the point that Mr. Weekly's trucks would be in violation of that ordinance if they're running to keep the air conditioning in their trucks, and that's where, you know, right close to where he lives in the residential area. So I do think it's a...will be a reasonable ordinance if you make that amendment. And I understand that, you know, your job is to strike a balance between what everyone's concerns are, and there are people that need to sleep, and there are businesses that are affected. But just taking into consideration how many people have come and shown their support for live music. The first night that we were here, this room's more packed than I'd ever seen it. You had all the letters that come in. You have all the petitions that come in. So I think it's really important to bring that provision down from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m., and I hope you all consider that. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Susan Cardenas from Stones and Cardenas, 221 Simonton Street. I'm an attorney, and I represent 55 individuals and businesses located in and on upper Duval. I also represent Peter Wagner, who owns four commercial properties and 11 residential properties on upper Duval. All of my clients support tighter restrictions on noise outside of the core commercial district. Everyone knows that upper Duval is different than lower Duval. Everybody in this chamber, everybody who's watching this on television, even the folks who make their living working in or owning bars on lower Duval, know that upper Duval is the quiet end of Duval. In point of fact, Mr. Wagner leases four residential units to musicians who work and play on lower Duval, but they come home to sleep and to wind down on upper Duval. All of the...all of you on the dais also recognize the differences between upper and lower Duval because you and your predecessors passed land development regulations which make that distinction. The HRCC 3 district is a district which imposes use restrictions which are more restrictive and prevent uses which produce excessive noise incompatible with surrounding activities. The surrounding activities on upper Duval are guest houses, B&amp;B accommodations, and many, many residents who have lived there for many years. My clients appalled the creation of a core commercial district for HRCC 1 and 2 with separate regulations and higher noise limits than those that will apply to the rest of the city. The noise ordinance that you enact should recognize the intensive noise uses in lower Duval, in the entertainment district, while protecting all of the other areas of the city, including upper Duval, from excessive noise levels. We propose that you approve the ordinance as passed at first readings, but revise to define core commercial district as HRCC 1 and 2, and imposing the high-decibel noise limitations within the core commercial district only. This will resolve the issues that middle Duval is concerned about and also my clients on upper Duval. In all areas in the city other than the core commercial district, the lower-decibel levels that you've proposed of 65 dBA and 74 during the day should apply. Of the many clients...of my many clients in the commercial district, none of them feel the need for higher-decibel limits for their uses. My clients also strongly support the plainly audible test being reinserted as originally drafted. On behalf of all 55 of my clients and others of the same...who feel the same way, please protect and preserve the quiet end of Duval and the quality of life throughout the city by imposing the strict restrictions on lower Duval only and leaving the rest of the city with the lower-decibel levels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Smith, and then Jesse Wagner.
Good evening. Brett Smith, 1331 White Street. I think regardless of the outcome today, it won't be the day that the music dies. Key West is a party town, and people come to Key West to party, but they want to party like they're in a fraternity, but they don't actually want to live in the fraternity. Lower end of, upper end of Duval and middle Duval have historically been quiet. What was included in the first reading, the plainly audible test and the more stricter definitions, is what's needed to preserve and protect what people, what people need so that they can party the next day. So I'd ask that the commission please take into consideration what was included in the first reading, and utilize that with the current version, because noise is a problem in the whole city, and everyone knows it, but we need to find a balance. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
I'm Jesse Wagner, 21 Rivera now, and I was on 513 Catherine last year. I like the, from a musician and a venue standpoint, I like the idea of moving it from 4:00 p.m. back to 10:00 a.m., just because I think that makes a lot of sense, and it seems kind of, I think a lot of people have already made that point. As a resident who lived up in southern Duval, across from Bottle Cap, two to four a.m., I think that the issue should get a little quieter. I don't think there's any reason a venue couldn't turn down and accommodate the individuals to sleep, or at least bump up, what is it, the A that catches the bass? The A-decibel? The C does? The C? Maybe that in those residential districts, because there is, this is coming from a musician, you know, and I'm afraid of losing my work, but that's not, it's not acceptable from, after two o'clock, I don't see why you would need that. I just really don't know who you're trying to attract, I mean, besides zombies at that point. Anyway, it's been a pleasure to have the debate. As a musician, with, I've gained a lot of respect from the other side, who somehow we've become enemies, and I don't think that that's true. I very much appreciate all the time that's been put in with everybody. Mayor, I really appreciate you meeting with us. That was very cool of you. And I realized that you all have a very, very, very tough job, and I do not envy any of you, you know? Not even the power that comes with the position. Hope you all have a good night. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Joel Nelson, and then Rick Haskins.
I don't see Joel. I think he left.
Okay, after Rick Haskins, Steve Carlson.
Joel left. Go ahead.
Is Joe not here?
Yes.
How are you? Rick Haskins, 1225 Second Street. I'm the owner of Key West Vacation Rentals. I'm also a real estate agent in town. So I'm going to speak to you from a couple of different directions, but the first thing I want to tell you is I think there's a huge misunderstanding that we're on different teams. It's our job, and we spend a ton of money bringing people to hang out in your bars. I'm personally one of them. So, and my family's been doing it for a very long time, not my mother and father, but the rest of my family are partiers. The, we, we want people to come down, we want people to stay in the bar, but they need a place to recover. I don't know how many of you drink, but the next morning, you need a little bit more time to come back around to do it the next night. So our guests are dying to come back, but if you don't give them some recovery time, they're not coming back. And if you don't give them a place to sleep, they're going to go find somewhere else to sleep where they can party and sleep. We, we're going to bring, I mean, you don't have any idea the efforts we make to bring people back when they have a complaint about noise, or please come back, it will be different, it will be different. My, I'll pick my battles. You know, the 10:00 a.m. thing, I'm not as concerned about as preserving middle and upper Duval. It's simple business for me. If you guys are going to reverse that for us, you need to give us two or three years, because I have bookings out two or three years that I have promised guests that the upper end and middle end of Duval is quieter and farther away from the bars, and I have marketed to the people that want to be next to the noise, that they can go down to the noise. So if you want to change it, it's okay. There's some serious litigation they're talking about, about if you restrict the businesses' right to make noise. Well, I'm talking about, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that are going to be in refunds to people who were promised a quiet upper and middle Duval. There's also, on the real estate end, how many houses have we sold to people that said, "Don't worry, you're not in the noisy part of Duval, you're in middle or upper Duval. Your transient rental license is going to be better than the one that's downtown closer to the louder bars, because it's on the quiet side." I can show you 100, maybe 1,000 reviews that say, "Close enough to the action, but far enough not to hear it." So we don't want, and the other thing I heard today was somebody say that, about competition. Where's, I don't remember where he is, I think he walked out. But he said about how it's so competitive, "Well, if you release that to middle and upper Duval, your competition's going to get broader. It's going to get bigger." Everybody's used to going to the big party spots, myself included. So if you see me down there, hopefully you've been drinking, so you don't recognize me. I'm speaking for you, too. We love to come down there, everybody loves to come down there, but we need a little recovery, and we want to promise the guests what they were, promise, we want to give them what they were promised. We promised them quiet enjoyment, we need to give them quiet enjoyment. Forget the residents, I mean, the residents, too, they've, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We're on the same team.
I was out of the room when they called me. It's Joel Nelson, 2409 Harris Avenue. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My question is the measuring. I know from code enforcement's point of view, they want to measure in the commercial district, and I guess now just the lower Duval commercial district from the property line, because that makes it easier to measure. But is not counterintuitive, I mean, the person who makes the complaint may be two blocks off of Duval, how can they measure what they're complaining about if they're not at the location of the complaint, as in the rest of the residential neighborhoods? I don't know, that may be a foregone conclusion, something you guys worked out. To me, it seems counterintuitive. And also the C-weighting, I've done some research on that, you know, music does have bass, but the compressors, the ceiling fans, the air conditioners, the trucks going by, the motorcycles, they all have heavily C-weighted noises, too. So I don't know how you're going to tell the difference. I just want it to be fair to everybody. It seems unfair to measure from the property line in one district and from the complainer's property line in another district. That's what I wanted to point out. I remember back at Sloppy Joe's, I was playing in the eighties, this was before the tie line, the power would go out, and it was, it was beautiful. You know, I'd be up on stage, it was, everything would shut down, the TVs would go off, the fans, all you would hear would be quiet conversation, the clink of glasses, walk outside, you can imagine the clip clop of the, of the trolley hooves, you know, the mule-drawn trolleys. But unfortunately, the electricity comes back on, and a tool of my job is to try and compensate for those compressors and those microphones, I mean, and, and, you know, all that noise, all that ambient noise. And also, I'm very much in support of the 10:00 a.m. thing. Or if you want a three, a three, you know, after three, make it really super quiet, but then at 10:00, make it back to, you know, medium quiet, and then at 9:00, make it more noisy. But that, it's draconian to, to restrict the, the levels until four in the afternoon.
Yeah, I'm Steve Gibson, I was called while Joel was out of the room. It occurs to me that, I don't know if anybody has really taken, listened to what dB levels are like, and it just seems like you have, in order to make an informed decision, you have to have some information. So this is an acoustic instrument, mandolin, and did a little test just before I came in, as to what, well... And what is that?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. This is one acoustic instrument, I might have been playing it that hard. You put a band together, and, you know, and I play in a band called the Love Land Gang, we play amplified acoustic instruments. You can't play acoustic instruments in a bar in respect to make a music that can be heard above people talking and the, et cetera. We're not talking about a very loud band or anything, but you would make it impossible for us to operate, you know, in some, you know, by making music at a reasonable level. When I came to town about 14 years ago, I was playing in Mallory Square, and let me tell you something, being stuck between Jeep and Will Soto, trying to play an instrument like this, and my singing voice, which isn't that loud, it was, it was just ridiculous. So I don't understand how you can operate with, create an ordinance with the levels that you're using. I'd suggest you use some higher levels. I'm all for having, you know, being able to have reasonable levels, but it's got, like I said, it's got to be reasonable. Also, one of the places where we play, the property line, as far as I know, is the edge of the building, which is right where we play, and taking a reading at that point would just be tantamount to shutting us down. And I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Skip O'Neill, and then Adam Stamper.
Hi, I'm Skip O'Neill, 1401 Truman Avenue. My feeling is, is this is Key West, it's the fantasy island without the Little Short Guy. It should be kept that way. No, we need him short, we need him shorter than that. And I've been coming here for 30 years, I've lived here now six years, I love this place, and people come here for the fun and the music. No, he's not short enough. Maybe we'll cut you down a size, but, no, kidding. And I just think, just listening here, I came up, I think this amendment should be modified already. And I think we should add lower Duval, what's on the books today, we should keep on the books, or make it higher for there. Now, listening to what they're saying in middle and upper Duval, I think that should be modified so these people can rest. And I have at one example, I come from Chicago, now O'Hare Field, my family is big in construction, and 40, 45 years ago, you could buy a lot for nothing. And then the people, when the planes started flying next to O'Hare Field, as soon as the planes started flying, everybody was complaining about the noise. So that's baloney. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, we should keep Key West, Key West, and, and work with the middle and upper Duval people, and let, let Key West be here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Adam Stamper.
Yes, hello. Adam Stamper, 1501 Truman, right by Eisenhower. I've been here for almost a year. I moved, I've been there on my current address for a while, and I'll tell you right now, it's noisier there than where I lived, right behind the grand, right on Duval Street. I get more sleep, I had more sleep then than I do now, with all the scooters, construction from homes, everything. And I find it insulting that this is taking so long to find out the right numbers in certain areas. I'm a musician, I play music, I know how loud something's supposed to be. When I'm in a room trying to make money in tips, I turn down, I ask people, "Is it loud? Is it too loud out there?" Because I want people to hear me. And when the crowd gets bigger, you have to turn it up, and that's what sound, certain sound people are for and whatnot. And what I'm saying is, with all the technology that we have, and nobody's doing this the right way, I'm just somewhat insulted, why it's taking so long, why you wouldn't just find somebody and hire somebody to do this right, instead of having us all come back so many times and not even know when these meetings are. Thanks.
Don Whitehead, and then Mrs. Morgan.
Get these famous things out first. I've come here as a hybrid.
Don, state your name and address, please.
Sorry, thanks. Don Whitehead, 913 Duval Street. I own the Wicker Guesthouse and another 30 or 40 units of either B&amp;Bs or vacation rentals. And I've also talked with two other vacation rental people that are, own about 230 totally with mine, and there's 230 units. They manage them, and I manage and own mine. My concern is the fact that, and I share what Jane spoke about, Kristen, and Rick, and that we'd like to keep things as they are, very much so, in the middle section, and not have any further changes to that area, with exception of any decibel changes that have been stated. We have a lot of complications in the fact that when the restaurants or bars go out of line with the volume, that costs us a lot of money. I can't tell you how many times, but I've added it up, and it's in one column, of thousands and thousands of dollars that I've given away, back to guests. And if I don't have another room in my inn, I can't recoup that. I can't resell them to sit in another, to stay in another room, once I've had them be annoyed by the high noise. What probably disturbs me more than that is that after I call to the, the police to come and make a recording, that that lasts about five to 10 minutes in some cases, where the individuals that have been playing the louder music at a bar, after the police have left, go right back to where they are, and I may have to call two or three times. I heard a gentleman earlier say that that was wrong, that he felt that his fellow musicians should not be thinking that way, and I hope that trend can continue on. From the other side, the other part of me being a hybrid, I go to, I go to Jazz, where they have, around the country where they have speakers that are about two stories high. I'm not in front of them, but I'm back. So I think everything has its right place. If that's the music that you want at that time, that's what you should be having. And I go down myself, and I dance and have a few drinks, not so much soda, but I can't make it back to my inn. The last part of it is, I live at the Wicker Guesthouse, so I am about 30 feet from Duval Street. And besides my guests saying things and hearing things, I hear them. So I have to get up in the middle of the night and go out and be able to rectify it. It's not enjoyable, and I'd like to see that these rules and regulations that you're putting in that are going to help our case, that they be included and passed. Thank you very much.
My name is Yadira Morgan. I live at 404 South Street. The present sound ordinance was meant to be improved to protect the quiet end of Duval and surrounding areas. I don't see any improvement if you don't implement the new plain audible test. I think you, I have explained many times the years, in previous year, that the outdoor amplified music from our next-door neighbor is here, is heard in the entire house, like I am in the party. Our living room and bedroom is five feet from the property line, so the 75 decibel invade our living room, dining room, and bedroom. There is no place to go inside or outside to have some relief. I told you before, it is devastating to see my husband working nine hours or more, including weekends, coming home for dinner, and instead of relaxing and having a well-deserved, pleasant dinner, time and watch his favorite program, or study a case he brings home, he can when he is subject to the abuse of the loud music, especially the bass. It is so aggravating. I get headaches, insomnia, and palpitation. He feels sicker than me. It affects our health emotionally and physically, and it drains our spirit, because we are helpless and cannot enjoy the peace and quiet that we all deserve when we are in our home. Please incorporate the new plain audible test, so the sound ordinance protects the quiet end of Duval and surrounding area that is where we live, and everybody deserves it, not only us. The decibel meter is subject... The decibel meter is subject to malfunction and does not measure the impact inside the house next to the source of the noise, especially the bass boom, boom, boom. I assure you that it's plain torture to be subject to the loud music, especially the pounding loud bass. We are a home, it's a family home, should not be blasted with loud bass and disturbing loud music. I need a livable home, and all these people that spoke too, they do need it, we all deserve I beg you to add the new plain audible test, otherwise it would be not improvement to the quiet end of Duval and surrounding areas. We will be on square number one, and all our efforts in vain and ignored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcella Gregory and then Elizabeth Kearns.
Marcella Gregory, thirty-nine Palm, four oh four South. I also want to request the original language of the plainly audible test. And it's resident, for residential, it's fifty feet from the sound source. I think for commercial, a hundred feet from the sound source is, is, is fine. Right now, as it's written, for disturbing noise, it's a hundred foot from the property line. A hundred feet from our property line is at the end of our property. Our property has two houses. So for most people, it's going to have two, unless you're the third house down, you're not going to be able to use the disturbing noise test because properties are, are smaller. Now, the other thing that I noticed is that it said just for sound that is within the commercial district, but didn't mention sound coming from HRCC one. So I think it should, people using the disturbing noise or the plainly audible test should be able to complain if there's sound coming from another zone, not just within their zone. The reason why we're asking for lower bass levels, I know nine decibels was sometimes what was measured in maybe the downtown area, but there were some that Jim Young said that weren't nine decibels, there were a few decibels higher than the A. And we measured a couple of weekends ago, around a seventy-eight, seventy-nine C, and the boom was pretty loud in the house. So the eighty-four kind of concerns us, so we're asking for the original seventy-seven C or something more in that range. I also noticed that for core, the meter's going to be measured collectively instead of, oh no, for core, it'll be the average. But for some reason, the commercial district was put into the collectively, the old reading, whereas we were told with code enforcement, if the, if the sound dips for a few seconds, which what music does, the reading would be, there would be no ticket. And we could be wrong, but that's what we were told. So we like the average measurement for ten to twenty seconds. And then there was also mention of five decibels less for properties that border a residential zone. Sound containment is so important. What Gary, the sound engineer, mentioned, I think people who are concerned really should reach out to an engineer to do everything you can to contain the sound, if it makes sense, the speakers, smaller, lower, shrubbery, all that is very, very important. Have you reached out to your neighbors, give your, you know, contact information? This is complaint-driven, so if you're not getting complaints, then you're going to be fine. This is, this law is not for most of the managers, owners here in Key West that are really nice. This is for the ones that just don't care, that there's something, just, they have a personality defect, and we can't do anything but, but the law. And so it's, it's for, for those, and everyone knows who they are. From Petronia to South, there's about two louder, I would only say there's two really loud, you know, consistent, weekly. Is that it?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Elizabeth Kearns, forty-four Key Cove. My question was more procedural. It has to do with, after so many complaints, three complaints, you suspend a license, right? There should be a maximum number of days you suspend the license, because every day you suspend a license, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. And if you think about the rental overhead on Duval Street and these other streets, it's so incredible that if you suspend their license for more than a week, they're going to go out of business. So we need to think about our business owners here, as far as, after three court findings, we can suspend the license for, say, a week or two, two weeks, and then after more complaints that we could maybe discuss finding these court complaints later, you can revoke the license totally. But usually, in a judge, judges are usually like, oh, six months, there you go, six months, they're out of business, you're done. So if you could say, maybe suspend the license for no more than five days, that would be excellent. Thanks.
Shirley Freeman and then John Vagnoni.
Good evening, I'm Shirley Freeman. I live at seven twenty-four Eaton Street. Two and a, it's two and a half blocks from Duval and two blocks from the Key West bite. I want, I want you to know, I agree with Susan Cardenas, who was representing the, the middle, I mean, the, the low, the upper Duval people. What she said is exactly what I want, except for one thing. She mentioned that the, she was recommending that the core district for entertainment be shrunk down to just the Duval Street corridor from Whitehead to Simington up to Petronia. That's wonderful. And then she mentioned the plainly audible. I've always thought that plainly audible was exactly, was good, because when you can hear it, if you can hear music more than a hundred feet away, then that's, that's just too loud. But then I got to realizing that this plainly audible might not take effect if the music is coming from the entertainment area. If it's coming from Duval or the bite, then that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in effect, the plainly audible. If that is true, then that is bad. Because I want to be able, from, from any of my neighbors in the Key West bite area, if there is, if there is loud music coming and it's plainly audible in their houses, they can complain. And not find themselves in a position that if it's plainly audible, but it's coming from the bite or from Duval Street, then they can't complain. I mean, that's just, that just won't work. So please, please make, I, where's Sean? He probably could answer that question. No, no, please make sure the plainly audible is in effect and that it is, it works everywhere. I mean, in lower, in, around the Key West bite and all over town. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
John Vagnoni, representing the Green Parrot Bar. I'm one of the owners of the Green Parrot, six oh one Whitehead Street. And first of all, I want to commend everybody on the dais for all the hard work you've put in the past couple of months, and you've come up with some great ideas, some great proposals. I think the decibel level that we've been kicking around is livable for a business like mine. I think the idea of three strikes is great, and all these things made me come to this meeting very hopeful. Now that I'm getting the gist of this, where there's talk of two separate districts, I'm not quite so hopeful anymore. I kind of feel like we're reinventing the wheel here for, I mean, by changing the district, districting here over what everybody seems to know was a small number of complaints coming from even a smaller number of businesses. All of a sudden, we're changing the rules for the districts. And I agree, I sympathize, and I respect people on Lower Duval Street. And I've made a career out of respecting my neighbors and being community-minded. And as Bill Blue put very well, that there's some businesses that have a true emotional investment in this community, and there's some business owners that do not. And I think some of the people from Lower Duval, Marcella said the same thing, there's some people that just don't care, and there's just, it's a small number of them. So that brings me to the point, if it's going to be two separate districts, and my business does not fall in to the parameters of the district with the higher levels, then all of a sudden, I'm getting spanked. A guy that has not had a complaint in forty years, I'm getting spanked, and people that started this whole ball rolling are going to get a pass. They're going to get the higher level. And to me, it's just a bitter pill to swallow, to see it that way. And I'm not sure what the solution is, but as I said, when I came in here, I was very hopeful, but now I'm starting to wonder. I mean, this is more about respecting your neighbors and getting along than drawing lines, I think. As I said, over the years, I've met with neighbors in daylight, I've met with them at night, I've been on their property, I've done everything to make sure that we do get along. And now all of a sudden, I feel like I'm going to be left out in the cold here. So I would urge you to, people that have been in business for forty years, who have entertainment licenses, who have not jeopardized our licenses, give them the opportunity to participate in this commercial district that you're creating. I timed that pretty good.
Hugh Morgan and then Kimball Ingram.
I wasn't prepared to talk about this, but Sean is doing a map of the core districts. John's business is only a building or two away. And the way that I read it is that you are going to incorporate some existing businesses within the core that are right next door. So that might make sense. You don't understand, Mr. Anderson?
Sir, I hear a lot of noise in the background. You're very odd.
Okay. Well, well, at any rate, it's been a long road. We've been at this, believe it or not, since December. And, and the, the city has been great. All the city commissioners about trying to tackle this problem. We just hope that we come out of the, out of the other end with something that's better than we have now. That was the purpose. I was just over at Sally's farewell, Sally Lewis. She sends her regards. We all hate to see her leave. She was a wonderful commissioner. She totally supports keeping our neighborhood quiet, and she was commensurating about the times that she tried to strengthen the noise ordinance, and never was quite successful. We talk about the economy, it's important to all of you and all of the city. What I would ask you to do is to do what you said you were going to do, and I'm sure you will, and that is provide the balance. We've balanced the core district, and we've apparently met most of their needs, but not to do so through throwing other businesses under the bus. You have businesses that are near, and residences that are near the, the core district that also need to be protected. We're losing money when those tourists leave. You, you heard Jane talk about that, about her people complain about they don't stay there anymore because of the noise in the area. You can protect them by doing one thing. You can protect them by applying the new plainly audible test to their, to their district. That is, the sound that comes from the core district that goes into their district should be protected. And that would be basically the buffer. Now, that, how to do that, the ordinance that you passed the first time, the plainly audible test, was in that. You all voted for it already. Why take it out? Sean did a great job. When, when I read that and I read the new definitions that he put in there, and new protections he put in there, I said, wow, this is modern, this is enforceable, this protects people. Not only the businesses on the eight hundred block and the ones, remember, the HRC one runs not only Duval, but all the way on, almost up to-
Mr. Morgan, Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, can we allow Mr. Morgan to finish his, his point?
Go ahead, finish your, your thought.
The, the HRCC runs from Petronia north to Duval, and you've got HRC two that wraps around the bite, okay? Now, it doesn't run Duval only, it goes all the way to Simington and Whitehead practically, and maybe one, one, one house over. That means that people that live a block away from this district, like Shirley does, like Jack Spotswood, Spotswood does, and Terry, they're not protected under the ordinances for you tonight because the noise is coming from the core district. They're only protected from noise that's coming from their own commercial district. So that's why that needs to be changed, to protect those people, and do the balance as also businesses that are close by, as I've talked about, that need that protection. So I strongly urge you to just lift the plainly audible test out of here, that before you tonight, replace it with the one that you passed the first time, make it applicable to all businesses and all residents outside of HRCC one. I also, and I will tell you to add manager to your list of persons liable because-
Okay, Mr. Morgan, that's, thank you.
Hi, my name's Kimball Ingram. I own Aqua nightclub at seven eleven Duval Street. When I first came to Key West, I remember the town being very quiet. There were no cruise ships. I drove a petty cap in the summer off from college, my first year down here, and spent a lot of times with my feet up on the seat, sitting in the back, because there was nobody on Duval Street. There was no noise. It was lovely. On the other hand, I didn't make any money, and I went back to school and got a degree to do something else. But I've come back. And one of the things that strikes me about Key West is consistency. And we're sitting here having conversations, and I came to the last couple of meetings, and I think there was discussion about an original decibel level. And I went around and recorded and think gave you all, all the measures, where pretty much every business failed at those originally proposed decibel levels. And that include downstairs at Rick's, where there was an acoustic guitarist playing The Beatles, which we all know is the devil's music. And so based on some of that, and some feedback that the city did, they were raised a nominal level, which seemed reasonable. And I, like John, I'm a little concerned, listening to some of the conversation, because that seemed to me a reasonable level. I have a decibel reader in the bar to ensure that I'm compliant with whatever the levels are, current or future. And I get a little bit scared when, when it starts getting bandied around from what was originally discussed, because I thought there were a couple of weeks, a couple of readings, and that was all quite reasonable. The first quarter of this year, Aqua nightclub helped raise over sixty thousand dollars for local organizations. We did that through Aqua Idol. We did that this past week, we raised almost ten thousand dollars for one of our employees who has cancer. We did that with a live band. It was, there was a reasonable amount of noise that came from our establishment, but we are, as people have said, working with our neighbors to ensure that we don't have any complaints. So Mario, who lives directly behind the back bar, which we've just reopened, me and I speak on a regular basis. What I'd like to go to is, whatever you do, please, make it clear, make it enforceable on a consistent basis. We, I am in a commercial zone. Don't start splitting things up so there's A, B, C, and D. Make it consistent, because one of the things, as I say, that concerns me about Key West is perception of inconsistency, whether it's a speaker, fair or unfair, whether it's a speaker saying there's a Bubba system, or conch justice, or whatever terms they use. Whatever you're going to do, make sure that's consistent. I'm quite happy to adjust, and I think we do a good job with our neighbors. But what, what I'm a little bit scared of is a number of different options for a control officer to start quoting, because that will confuse me. And if it confuses me, it's going to confuse everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
John Gadanix and then Joe Clements.
My name, John Gadanix, ten seventy-five Duval Street. I lived there. Been there twenty-seven years. I own a business on, up at Duval, and I'd like to see up at Duval stay up at Duval, not downtown. Downtown is good for the people that want to go down and visit, then they always come up to my place or surrounding restaurants to get a nice peaceful evening, all right? I agree with Chris Haskins and Susan. I just- I'd just like to see Duval stay that way. All right? That's it. Thank you.
Joe Clements, 728 Pride Circle. I just wanna take a little different approach. It's not really about the music, because I think this whole thing borders a threat on our personal and neighbor-to-neighbor kind of situations as well. It's not just about music and entertainment. It seems like it's always a minority that wants to shove their ideas down the majority's throats. And, I mean, we live on a two-by-four island. You can hear somebody burp on the other side of the island, and everybody's complaining about whatever noise it might be, because their lifestyle doesn't match somebody else's lifestyle. It's like moving to the country and complaining because the farm tractors are out there plowing, and you own the property next door and you're not a farmer. I mean, people are moving into these areas and then complaining about it. They complain about the leaf blowers. I mean, the leaf blowers, at least they're out there doing a part to clean up their piece of paradise. Some people could learn from that, to clean up their own areas. And, I mean, you don't want them to cut the trees down, but yet you're gonna tell them how to manage their yards and when to do it and that kind of thing. I think this digs too close to that. Maybe the person that's blowing the leaves only has, you know, that period of time of the day to do that work in their yard. Maybe they've got a bunch of chores they've gotta do. So, you know, one of the most important things I suggest is you go to the neighbor and express the fact that maybe Tuesday night you work till four and you need to sleep till 10:00. Maybe that neighbor can come in and start doing their blowing at 10:30. I think the biggest problem here that we see is we don't have neighborhoods anymore. The days where the kids are out playing in the neighborhood, it's gone. You know, there used to be, there used to be street parties and block parties where the neighbors knew each other and they waved to each other in the morning, said good morning or good night or good evening, whatever it might be. And, you know, I bet that most of you, at least in my neighborhood, I know it's true, most of you don't do that anymore. And there's a percentage, I would say, that don't even say it to their significant others in the morning or when they come home from work. So I think that's a, there's a bigger issue here. But motorcycles, there's complaint about motorcycle noise. Well, there's laws on the books to cover that, so it shouldn't be an issue there. Some people think everybody should ride a bicycle in town, just pedal, you know, pedal around and make no noise. Well, there's motors on some of the bicycles, and I think some of those people will complain about the skateboard noise, the wheels going down the street. Some people just wanna complain, it seems like. And it drives me crazy. Ambulance noise, I mean, if you wanna move to Big Pine, that's where they close down at 10:00. I suggest that's what you do. Some people complain about ambulance noise. To me, that's crazy. You know, it's a problem unless it's your loved one, and just give me a minute, please, unless it's your loved one and they're out to the hospital and can't get around because the traffic pattern is so messed up as it is. Or maybe you're one of those that rides the bike and you don't want the noise from the ambulance, but you turn the corner and all of a sudden you get smashed by them because they didn't have their siren on. I lived behind a cat house, behind Dirty Harry's for seven years on Telegraph Lane, probably, arguably the noisiest place I could be, but that's where I chose to live. You know, we've got people moving into these areas where there's live music and it's there all the time. That's where they choose to live. One last thing about the Navy jets, you know, complaints about the Navy noise. A ton of people complain about it. I love the sound of freedom, and I think it's amazing what I see go over my house every single day. I get a show.
All right, Joe, thank you.
Thank you. One more thing, if I could?
Go.
Just, I think everybody should learn to get along with other people and realize their schedules are different, that no people's time is more important than anybody else's.
Okay, Joe.
Good evening. Thank you.
Brad Dillon.
That was Joey, Joe.
Hi there, folks. My name's Rand. I've lived in Key West for five years and managed to only be in the paper for good things. I played at the AIDS Memorial. I've played for Mark House. I play classical guitar. I host the open mic at Harpoon Harry's, where I just decided to leave the PA home. I'm not the enemy. I play classical guitar. I joined the Air Force straight out of high school. I knew, I was youngest of a family with too many kids to send the youngest guy to college. So I soaked my high school education for all it was worth, and I took science and I took physics. And I honestly believe that somebody who knows the physics of sound should be in charge of where you put the speaker, because the first thing you do when you move the speaker is you move the speaker cord. And as soon as you do that, five feet, 15 feet, you are leaving that cord to be tripped over by someone whose balance was already in question. No, that was point number one. And the second one was when you move the speaker, you move it closer to the microphone, you get feedback. I was gonna demonstrate, but I'll save you that. Let me see. Now then. Well, most of these things have already been covered. The 10:00 AM wake-up call, if you think that's too early, it still doesn't need to be moved all the way to 4:00 in the afternoon. If you think 10:00 AM is too soon, make it 10:30, make it 11:00, but 4:00 in the afternoon, we're all out of bed by then. Aren't we? Okay. With the minute I've got left, I'd like to say I've also taken under my wing some underprivileged kids, and I'm teaching them guitar. If you've got a guitar in your house that you're willing to part with for a good cause, you let me know. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all the speakers I have signed up for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Really? Okay. Commissioner Weekly, this is your-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reserve my time right now.
Okay. Well, you get a chance to present it.
Right, I understand.
Okay. Reserve it to then.
Okay. This is the ordinance. It's presented.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. I thought you were- You know, I mean, I guess I have a question, and that is, how do we want to handle some of the discussion that went on from the public? And questions that were brought up? And also, any, I guess, amendments? Or do you want a motion to approve first? And then we'll do those amendments, or?
You can ask all the questions first and clarify any questions that were asked with the city attorney, and then we would do the amendments first. And once the amendments are completed, then what remains is the ordinance, and then we would vote on the ordinance. And each one of the amendments will be discussed as a motion, made and discussed as a motion.
Mayor, can I ask a clarification? The ordinance that was put up on Legistar is not the same 23-page ordinance that Sean sent us, correct?
Yes, ma'am. What was posted, what was posted initially is exactly what you passed on first reading.
Okay, all right. That makes it very clear why there was some confusion out here, because many people don't, didn't have the information on the core and the commercial and the residential districts, so-
What, I'm sorry. What was included was my memo to the commission, which suggested creating those core commercial districts with the elevated sound levels that the city commission approved on first reading.
Okay, all right.
What I sent you were changes that would accomplish that purpose.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Yanis?
Thank you, sir. Sean, I asked you a question earlier, pursuant to the different areas and the different zoning and the exceptions and your suggestions, and if you'd clarify that for us, I'd be very appreciative.
Sure. Yeah, and maybe that's the best starting point. You approved an ordinance on first reading, and certainly some time has passed since that approval. There's been a postponement and a number of suggested changes. When you last left this item, all commercial areas were treated the same and residential areas were treated the same. Those commercial areas, all commercial areas had an elevated sound level that you approved on first reading, I believe it was 84, 90, 84 dBA, 94 DBC. In looking to come up with exceptions for particular areas that the commission had asked me about, I reviewed your suggestions, and it was my opinion that rather than making a number of exceptions to address those intensely commercial areas, rather than try to find exceptions in treating all commercial areas the same, the suggestion was use your current HRCC-1, which runs from lower Duval to Petronia Street, and HRCC-2, which essentially runs down Green Street into the bite, as your core commercial districts, because that is how they are defined in your land development regulations. They are your most intensely commercial districts within the city. And to use the elevated noise levels that you adopted on first reading for those districts. Essentially, what is proposed is to leave what you have in place now for all commercial districts and all residential districts, with the exception of HRCC-1 and HRCC-2. The only exception to that is adding a DBC level, which measures the base, for your other commercial areas and your other residential areas. And the factor for doing that is the exact same number as you used for the commercial areas with respect to dBA is, whatever the number is, minus or plus nine for DBC. So that's how that factor was arrived at. But again, your commercial areas other than HRCC-1 and HRCC-2 dropped significantly, I believe, from 84 to 75 dBA under this suggested change. And again, everything else essentially remains as is. The upper end of Duval that you wanted to maintain the quiet nature as compared to the lower end is accomplished by allowing that area to stay the same at 75 while allowing the lower end and out into the bite to increase. The disturbing noise standard that you have in your current ordinance that allows for this plainly audible test that we were hearing about before remains for those districts. The one that was proposed previously was for commercial areas, I'm sorry, for the residential areas. What exists today, and I wanna emphasize the fact, what is proposed now is to only change the decibel level readings in the core commercial areas, HRCC-1 and HRCC-2. Is that sufficient for this?
What he said, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
I'm just afraid that, Sean, if we do what you've just suggested, you will be like excedrent to my headache if we do this. But I'm just afraid that once we start discussing, that we're gonna get, we're gonna make this as clear as mud. And that's my concern.
I would suggest to you, Commissioner, that, you know, obviously, you've spent a good time, and the public has spent a good time going through this. I suggest we go page by page with respect to the suggested changes, so that there's nothing left unsaid with each motion focused specifically on that proposed change. In addition to what I had suggested in my email to the commission, there were a couple of other changes that individual commission members had asked for after the last meeting that were included in a memo that was attached online. And if I can quickly, Mr. Mayor-
Yes, please.
-go through those as well. There was a suggestion at first reading that I come back with some language regarding who would be responsible, the responsible party, the liability. And in a memo dated March 25th to the commission, I suggested adding the language, the individual controlling or responsible for maintaining the volume of unreasonably excessive noise. So you get the person that's responsible. I know there was a lot of discussion among the commission about whether or not the particular musician that might be playing music gets cited, or it's the individual that's controlling the volume if someone other than that musician. So that proposed change was intended to address that concern of the commission. Another provision I was asked to come up with was the situation where there are multiple complaints which are unfounded. And I suggested to you, you have a section on your liability provision that talks about multiple unsubstantiated complaints. I define an unsubstantiated complaint as one to which a noise control officer has responded and found either no evidence of any noise or sound that is 10 decibels or more below the standard for finding a violation of unreasonably excessive noise. The noise control officer shall explain his or her findings to the complainant and detail the relevant standards for determining a violation as specified by the city code. And she'll be a violation of this article subject an individual to the provisions of chapter two, which is your code provisions, for any individual to make three or more unsubstantiated complaints within a one-month period. I didn't want it to be, I didn't want it to discourage individuals from making complaints, but the commission asked me to come up with something that held those that made unsubstantiated complaints accountable. The final issue in that May 25th memo, we had discussed at first reading how you wanted to treat the violation with respect to a penalty. And it was the consensus of the commission to treat a violation as a code violation subject to a hearing before the special magistrate. In order to do that, I suggest in, on page 16, replacing section 1-15 with the statement in chapter two, article four, division two of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Key West, which is your code enforcement proceeding. The other item, and this was included in my April 1 memo to the commission, which is also linked online, the mayor had suggested changing the 4:00 PM time at which the sound level was at 85 or 94, 85 dBA or 94 DBC to 10:00 AM. And that's what you heard from a lot of the, or a number of members of the public tonight. And that would be accomplished in your main section on noise limitations. There is one other item that you may wish to, actually, two other items you may wish to consider. In attempting to come up with a buffer between your core commercial and your commercial area, or even your commercial area and your residential area, I suggested that you could limit the DBAs and DBCs in any particular zone by five for properties that adjoining a different zoning district. Again, that's just food for thought. And the other thing I suggested, I think in my most recent memo to you, was some recognition of longstanding establishments whose zoning district border the HRCC-1 and HRCC-2. And it may be that you even want to put on some sort of restrictions, such as you must have held an entertainment license for the past 10 years with a finding of no more than one violation, something of that, so you have a business that's longstanding and in fact has been responsible.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yep. Sean, the gentleman that was talking that lived on Rose Lane, where they have a lot of problems with the base coming from right there on the corner of Duval Street, is this gonna affect them in any way that would lessen the noise, or would it get more noisier down in that area off of Rose Lane?
I think it changes the location from which a measurement is taken. If there's a complaint from Rose Lane, then you go directly to the sound source and measure the decibels there, rather than at the location that you hear the noise, as is in the present ordinance.
So then it would lessen the noise down further on Rose Lane than what it is right now? Because you're measuring from the property line now.
Right, well, the measurement would change. I don't know that the noise level necessarily changes because your dBA and DBC in the core commercial area is based upon the data collected by your code enforcement department. But it certainly will capture the dBA and DBC better than if it's taken at that location.
And the suggestion that Mr. Morgan made, that's part of the first ordinance that we had?
Plainly audible. If you adopt, and let me give you the situation. If you have noise coming from HRCC-1 and you adopt the plainly audible test for the adjoining district, what you pretty much do is do away with the decibel meter reading, because if you're just, if you're close enough to hear it and it's still well below or below the dBA or DBC for that zoning district, then your dBA and DBC levels are essentially meaningless.
So that it'd be better to go with what we have now?
Yes, sir.
Would you say that again, Commissioner Wardlow?
Pardon?
Would you say that again? What did you just say?
I said it'd be better to go with what we have now.
Which, meaning what?
The ordinance that's written the way it is now.
Okay. I have some confusion there, because the plainly audible test was a tool that we had into the first reading. We had it on the original ordinance. And correct me if I'm misstating this, Sean, but both- And correct me if I'm misstating this, Sean, but both you and our code compliance officer felt that that was a necessary enforcement tool to have?
We recommend, in fact, probably two or three years ago, we recommended that, which the commission rejected. The plainly audible test, we said, works for areas in which you can readily identify the sound source. We have a problem. The reason we suggested to you to have the decibel meter reading from the sound source is to distinguish between various areas and districts which generate much sound, so you don't have one business pointing the finger at another business when it comes time to present your findings in a hearing.
However, we've had and/or, in the original ordinance, we had and/or, both of those, meaning both of them.
In the ordinance for first reading?
Right.
Okay, I will pull it up, but I don't believe-
Well, the original ordinance, it was and/or, and we simply took out?
You had, I recall this specifically now, Commissioner, your plainly audible test on first reading was applicable in residential districts.
Okay, let me ask you this, or maybe I should ask Jim Youngness. Why wouldn't we want the additional tool of plainly audible? I mean, we're sitting here right now, and the doubts that the public has is the fact that we're crafting an inenforceable ordinance.
It's like-
So why would we not want the plainly audible tool?
As Sean, Jim Young, senior magistrate code, as Sean stated, if you have that zone that's not in the core commercial district, that would eliminate us running the decibel. You have that language in this ordinance now with the disturbing noise.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying in replacing the decibel meter, I'm saying that you use that as an additional tool for enforcement.
I don't know how to answer that, to be honest with you, because then there would be no standard measurement. And then, as long as you heard it, you'd have to handle the complaints.
Okay, all right, so you didn't want the plainly audible test?
I-
You didn't want that left in?
I agree with the disturbing noise verbiage that's in the original ordinance that we put back in to replace the plainly audible. If you remember, two years ago, Donnie Lee and myself tried to push for plainly audible, and the commission felt it was too subjective.
Commissioner Lopez?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, thanks. Sean, okay, so my understanding is that if we do, if we were to pass this with your suggestions, those areas outside of the core entertainment or core commercial districts would then have that extra tool already applied, am I correct?
Yeah, just as they do today.
Just as they do today.
Again, so then that wouldn't change. Correct. The, again, the change, after all this discussion, this ordinance changes the noise, or the sound levels, excuse me, in the HRCC one and HRCC two zoning districts. It does not affect the disturbing noise standard, which is the audible standard as it exists today with commercial and residential properties with the exception of HRCC one and HRCC two.
So, clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Weekly?
Okay. Sean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the example that Commissioner, that Mr. Freeman used about the Key West bite area, which is in that, in that commercial core there.
Yes, sir.
So if there's an issue with someone on Eaton Street or Williams Street or any of their streets that aren't, what tools do they use? I mean, they file a complaint, okay, the complaint, the code enforcement officer comes out, takes a reading from the property line, right?
Correct, sir.
And then, if, if it's with, I mean-
Sure. Here's, I understand your question to be this, if a business is located in the HRCC two zoning district and an individual in an adjoining residential area, not in the HRCC two zoning district, hears the music or hears whatever sound is generated, what's their remedy? The code officer goes to the sound source and takes a decibel meter reading from the sound source, as opposed to what it is today where they would take the sound reading from the complainant's location.
Sean, in other words, what he's saying is, we can use Shirley as an example. So if Shirley hears music at her house that's coming from the bite, if it's disturbing sound, okay, it's going to be more than plainly audible anyhow, you're going to go to the sound source. The way to do that is by the decibel reading. That's how, because in a court of law, is this correct, Sean? Right? Plainly audible, audible to one person is not audible to another. But with the decibel reader, is that correct?
Well, in part, Commissioner, what-
Because it would be coming from the property line.
The reason that we've suggested for these commercial areas, the, these intensely commercial areas or core commercial areas, is utilization of a decibel meter reading is to cut down on the ability of someone to say it was another bar owner. Listen, before I came to work for you guys, I represented a host of bars on Lower DeBol Street. I never lost a sound case because the code officer could not prove it was that bar generating the noise. So what happens now is, if there's a complaint from someone on Mount Margaret Street, back out of the bite, that code officer hears the sound. That code officer may go to two different businesses, put the decibel meter reading there where noise is coming from or sound is coming from, and you may have two violations for excessive or unreasonably excessive noise. It pinpoints the source, but it does not give you the plainly audible test if you are outside the core commercial area.
Okay, any other questions?
We're going to go page by page?
We're going to go page by page for the amendments.
Can I ask, Commissioner Mayor, on the first page, something, and I don't know if anyone else has this, but in the preamble that was read by Sherry, in the last, in the last section, there's a scribbler's error where it says sixteen instead of twenty-six. So that needs to be corrected before, just to do that quick, a scribbler's error.
Sixteen, twenty, where's that at?
On your first page.
On the preamble.
I got it, Commissioner.
Yep. It should be twenty-six.
Now, this is going to go for a third reading, is that correct?
No, sir. If it passes this evening, it's final.
We'll vote on all the changes, and then we'll vote on the ordinance.
Unless you like the enjoyment of it so much you want a third reading.
Let's go page by page.
Okay, here comes Commissioner Lopez, so we can start. Do the first page, you want to?
First page looks good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go right to the changes?
Yes.
And perhaps if I miss something, a commission member can catch it for me. I'm on page four, commercial district, in the definition section.
Yes.
The suggestion is striking out HRCC one and HRCC two because you are going to redefine those in the following section under core commercial, if that's your desire. So the first motion would be to strike those two sections. And in fact, perhaps it's better to do both of these together because they're related. You strike HRCC one and HRCC two from the definition of commercial district, and you add a definition, core commercial district means the HRCC one and HRCC two zoning districts.
Yeah, the one I have has that in it.
But this is Sean's modifications, not the one that's on the screen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what the citizens are looking at.
Yeah, but that's what we're voting on tonight. These are the recommendations that Sean's given.
Okay, so we have a motion for that?
I move.
Motion from Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Yanis. Any discussion? All in favor, with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hear or none, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, on page five, in order to tie disturbing noise and unreasonable noise together as unreasonably excessive noise, I suggest in the disturbing noise definition adding the word unreasonably excessive noise, that is, which would start the sentence, disturbing noise means unreasonably excessive noise, that is, and it goes on from there.
Do we have a motion?
I'm up.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Lopez. Any discussion? All in favor, with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear or none, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, on page six, again, in the definition section, this is of unreasonable noise. Again, this is to tie definitions together. I suggest adding the words unreasonably excessive noise. I suggest striking from sub-paragraph one, the two words, any noise. I suggest capitalizing the C in the D in commercial district. And again, striking any noise from sub-paragraph two.
I have a conversation here.
Go ahead.
This was, this was one of the points that Susan made and Jane made. And the DBAs and DBCs here in the commercial district, which is the other side of Petronia up to south, the current level right now is seventy-five DBAs and eighty-four DBCs. That's not what I heard you mention, Susan. Okay, you mentioned levels of sixty-five and seventy-four. Okay? Okay? Have a discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, you can't do that. You talk louder than sixty-five right now. I mean, seventy-five is reasonable. I can sit here with seventy-five.
All right, let me, let me-
We'll make a motion and vote on, make a motion for a certain level.
Okay, what I'd like to make a motion at is seventy-five and bring eighty-four down to seventy-seven.
To seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven, yeah, which was a recommendation from the guesthouse district.
And that's for the C scale?
Yes.
Seventy-five for the A scale and seventy-seven for the C scale?
Yep.
Seventy-five for A.
Seventy-five DBA, seventy-seven DBC for the commercial district, which is HRCC three.
No, that's, your commercial district, let me tell you, your commercial districts, again, this is, seventy-five is in your current code. The only thing that I'm recommending here is adding the DBC, and the DBC is based upon the same scale that we've applied throughout the ordinance.
But you're talking about the commercial district, don't you?
Yes, ma'am, I'm trying to get you the language that has those commercial areas. It's in your definitions section, commercial district means the HRO, HRCC three, HNC one, HNC two, HCT, HPS, Mallory, but only CL, CG, CT, and A zoning districts. Again, that's your current, your current commercial definition, less the, or the HRCC one and two.
Right, upper deval.
Upper-
Right?
That's part of upper deval, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Then I'd like to, I'd like that motion to stand to modify those to seventy-five DBA, which is exactly what you've got, and reduce the eighty-four to seventy-seven DBCs.
I'll second that. Seconded by Commissioner Weekly. Any discussion?
I could go with eight.
That was a request from the guesthouse, from the actual area that's servicing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just clarify something, seventy-five is existing. If you're going to amend something, you need to, with all due respect, focus on the DBC.
Right.
Your current seventy-five is there, that's the current ordinance. So if that's what you want, your motion should just focus on the DBC level.
Okay.
So you're taking the seventy-five out of your motion?
I'll amend that motion to modify the DBCs from eighty-four to seventy-seven.
Second. Any other discussion? I agree with Commissioner Rossi, that is a little too low, I believe, in the scale. It may be unreasonable. So, call the roll on that, please.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
No.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
Nope.
Mayor Cates?
No. Motion passes.
And, again, I need a motion to, for internal consistency on definition, to add the words unreasonably excessive noise and strike the words any noise in that same paragraph.
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
To make those changes from Commissioner Rossi, seconded by Commissioner Lopez. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Weekly?
Why are you taking any noise out? Does unreasonably excessive noise-
Because the sentence doesn't read, doesn't read correctly with that noise. It's unreasonable noise means unreasonably excessive noise, any noise. If that stays in there, it makes absolutely no sense.
Okay, so, I see what you're doing, unreasonably excessive noise, and then it continues.
Right, and you also need to, I would recommend capitalizing the C and D in commercial district as well.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear or none, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, subsection two deals with residential district. You've now lowered the DBC in the commercial district to seventy-four. I believe you have to address the DBC in the residential-
No, seventy-seven.
I'm sorry, seventy-seven. You have, you have to address the DBC in that residential district as well, both in the, should you so desire, in the hours that are specified there. Right now, it's seventy-five DBA and sixty DBA with no DBC reading.
There's also a time period in there, Sean.
Yes, sir. Your noise in a residential district which equal or exceeds the measured sound of seventy DBA between eight A.M. and seventy-nine, seven fifty-nine P.M., and sixty DBA from eight P.M. to seven fifty-nine A.M.
Should I have a motion for the C scale?
Well, we need to amend-
The DBCs.
The DBC to seventy-seven.
Yep. I'll second that.
To amend it to seventy-seven, from Commissioner Weekly, seconded by Commissioner Johnston. And that's for all the hours? I thought it was lower after-
Yeah, let's see, because we got two different, we got two different DBA measurements here.
Right, because it gets lower after-
This is eight A.M. to seven fifty-nine P.M.
We're going to do the morning one, the daytime one first.
Right.
Okay, do we have any discussion? All in favor, with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay.
Two opposed, Commissioner Rossi and Commissioner Yanis.
Mayor, could we go back one page? I won't take but a second.
Finish this motion, please.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Sean, I guess, I guess I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out what would be an appropriate DBC measurement from the sixty DBA.
You, I don't know the basis for simply going up by, by two. That the commission just passed for a commercial district and residential district, so if there's a basis or rationale for that, I think you're, you'd be consistent with it.
Then that's, then that's what I'll, I'll move, then.
To sixty-two?
To sixty-two DBC.
On the C scale, from Commissioner Lopez, seconded by Commissioner Johnston.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
That's residential.
Excuse me one second, that's residential, but you're moving it to sixty-two from sixty-nine?
No, 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 it's sixty. Again, Commissioner Rossi, sixty-nine was the proposal. On all of these, the DBA, the DBC went up by nine because that's the factor we've been using in other communities used.
So we're lowering it to sixty-two from eight to seven fifty-nine? So we're lowering it to sixty-two from eight to seven fifty-nine?
Yes, yep. No, that's eight PM to seven fifty-nine AM. That's evening, yeah, yeah.
Do, is there any discussion? Call to roll.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi? Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
No.
Mayor Cates?
No. Motion passes.
Mayor, can I take us back one page, page six, before we move on? There are no timeframes in this, Sean.
No, ma'am.
In the Commercial, Commercial area, so same DBAs twenty-four hours a day.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just clarify that question. Okay, all right, back to the next one.
Sean, do you think we need to add that designation that this is twenty-four hours a day?
No, because that's the, that's the sound level in that, in that district.
Okay, right.
Next one?
On page...
City Attorney, City Attorney's going to make the, get us on the right page, and then we'll go back to your question, okay?
On page eight, with respect to the Core Commercial District, you presently have eighty-five DBA and ninety-four DBC between the hours of four PM and two fifty-nine, two fifty-nine AM. I believe there was a suggested change to make that ten AM. And that would likewise change the hours in subsection B to nine fifty-nine. That should be AM.
That's, that's A, A, page eight?
That's page eight, A and B, on your sound levels for the Core Commercial District and the timeframes.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Rossi, seconded by Commissioner Yanis. Any discussion?
So this, this changes to where, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, this changes it so it goes to, starting at ten, going to three fifty-nine AM. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, go from ten AM to three fifty-nine AM.
Two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine, right, two fifty-nine AM, which is basically three o'clock. So, that means for fifteen hours, that sound can be at that, at that level. From ten o'clock, when people are just getting going and starting, and businesses are just opening, and some businesses like art galleries, or businesses like, you know, there's a lot of offices within this core district as well, of attorneys, of real estate offices, of, of architects in that, in that core area there, that may not want to be subjected to an increase in the sound levels, starting at ten AM and going into four until that time. So I, I think that the seventy-five is reasonable. I went out with Jim Young and took, and took a reading, and actually, the place where we took the reading was below the seventy-five, the seventy-five decibels, at ten thirty, eleven o'clock in the morning. And yes, there was ambient sound behind the taking of the reading, but there was also, you know, the deductions from the, from the code officers that were taking the readings. So I think that's just way too long to be able to reach those higher levels. I don't believe it's going to impact any of the, any of the businesses. I, I believe that the musicians will still be able to perform, the bartenders will still be able to pour, and the waitresses will still be able to serve those coming off cruise ships. I think that, do you want to be able to have these establishments go like that for fifteen hours? Sure, a lot of the, a lot of the businesses close up at, at ten o'clock at night. A lot of them close, a lot of the offices may close at, at four, five, or six, but, you know, fifteen, fifteen hours that's being allowed is just way, way, way too long. And, you know, talk about being neighborly. Well, it's not only being neighborly with the residents, but I think it also needs to be neighborly with other businesses, and take into consideration what they do and the impact that it could cause them. Maybe they're the ones that would have to lose a sales personnel, a personnel, or lose someone else, or maybe someone in the, in the offices there may have to lay somebody off or whatever. So, you know, I mean, let, let's have a little compassion for other businesses. You know, let's think...
Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's, it's, whatever it is, I, I just, you know, but whatever it is, it's still a long period of time to impact those other, other businesses.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Wardlow?
I'd like to change it to, starting at noon, instead of starting at, what is that? At four PM, change it to noon, and change it at ten, ten o'clock to noon.
What, what about one o'clock?
I'd say one.
Do one o'clock, I'll support one o'clock.
I'd just like to comment on that. I mean, there's, there's so much ambient noise going on down there, the trucks delivering, the compressors running on those, there's a lot of noise down there. I don't see that where this... Please, please, please. That, that, this is going to change the effect down there. We're actually bringing those businesses in lower than what they're experiencing now anyway, even when we're measuring closer. So I, I don't believe this, this core business district there, Entertainment District, needs to start early with the, the visitors coming from the cruise ships, and that they get here early, they, they leave by three o'clock. These don't get an opportunity. That's my opinion.
I'd like to make a motion that started at noon.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor now for ten.
Okay.
So, we're commenting on that. Commissioner Yanis?
Mr. Mayor? I agree with you.
Thank you. Well, I don't know what to say. That's good, thank you. All right. So I'd like to, I, I think we owe this to the musicians there, to support their businesses, and I think it's fair. So, any other discussion? We'll vote on this, and then if it fails or whatever, we'll, we'll...
Go back. All right, call to roll, please.
Commissioner Johnston?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
No.
Commissioner Weekly?
No.
Commissioner Yanis?
Yes.
Mayor Cates?
Yes. Motion fails.
Now, we're going to make another motion?
Let's come up with another motion.
We're going to make another motion?
Make a motion, started at noon, twelve noon.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm thinking eleven, too.
Mr. Mayor.
We've already got a motion on, so...
Well, we don't have a second yet. We need a second for...
I'll second that.
A second for twelve. Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Yanis?
I, I appreciate that we have a motion on the floor, but quite frankly, I think, like I said, I agree with you at ten o'clock, and I think this folks could live, live with eleven, but now we go to twelve. Commissioner Weekly wants one, pretty soon it's two.
Well, we still, that's the process.
Again, I'm just making my, my, my point, sir.
And I totally support you, sir. Hopefully, we'll, this fails, we'll come back for eleven.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Lopez?
I just say something for case in point. Sloppy Jones starts their music at eleven o'clock in the morning. So, you know, after ten o'clock, ten thirty in the morning, the noise is down there. This is, you put in it to twelve, it's going to hurt everybody. You got the ships, the tourists, people are leaving here by two o'clock. I mean, you know, I'm just telling you, I'm down there every day. It's eleven o'clock.
I'll withdraw my motion and make it eleven o'clock.
I'll, I'll second it.
I'll second.
I'll, I'll second.
No, I'll modify my second. I'll modify my second.
Okay, she already had the second, so it's, motion's been changed to eleven o'clock by Commissioner Weekly, seconded by Commissioner...
No, Commissioner Wardlow.
Wardlow's.
I know you get...
Wrong W. Okay. And seconded by Commissioner Johnston. Any other discussion? Call to roll, please.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
Yes.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
What's that? You didn't take longer than Commissioner Lopez usually takes.
Pardon me?
You didn't take longer.
I, I've got to work, I've got to work on that.
Okay, next.
Mr. Mayor, staying on page eight, this is where you transition to the residential and commercial areas. In order to do so, you need to strike out the language in all areas of the city of Key West, other than those areas listed in subsection B one above. You would do that because you have now created three categories, the Core Commercial, the Commercial, and the Residential. That language previously referred to only the Commercial area, so if you strike that initial phrase in paragraph two, you can go on to define the Commercial and Residential Districts. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept that.
Motion approved. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rossi. Any discussion? Here or none? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here or none? Motion passes.
The next, staying on page eight, and continuing to near the bottom of page nine, this language, with the, with the exception of the introductory clause, comes directly from your current ordinance regarding unreasonable noise and disturbing noise. It's simply pulled forward into this section because it makes more sense. You would start with the phrase, "In any residential or commercial district as defined in this article, a decibel meter shall be used for a complaint of unreasonable noise made at or within one hundred feet of the property line of the sound source. The decibel reading shall be made at the location of the complaint. The investigating officer shall issue a citation for unreasonable noise." That should actually be for unreasonably excessive noise. Unless in his judgment, a warning is sufficient to cease the violation, there shall be no more than a total of one warning per offending person or establishment. Again, that ties in your current unreasonable noise standard utilizing the decibel meter in that area. Am I on ten? I'm on page nine. It would be paragraph two. Yes, sir.
Could, could you do that again?
Sure. You want me to read the, the whole clause again?
Well, yeah, because I lost you somewhere along the line.
Okay. Again, starting on, on page eight, you've already struck the language about, in all areas of the city, other than those areas listed in subsection B one above. So the first clause, "In any residential or commercial district as defined in this article," comma, the rest of this, the rest of this paragraph comes from your current unreasonable noise standard, which states, "A decibel meter shall be used for a complaint of unreasonable noise made at or within one hundred feet of the property line of the sound source. The decibel reading shall be made at that, at the location of the complaint. The investigating officer shall issue a citation for unreasonable, unreasonably excessive noise unless in his judgment, a warning is sufficient to cease the violation. There shall be no more than a total of one warning per offending person or establishment."
Okay.
Well, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Rossi?
Because that is one warning in a twelve-month period.
Okay.
Maybe it should be one warning in a six-month period. It's up to the dice, I mean...
Whoever makes the motion can certainly add...
You know, I'll make a motion to change it to one in six months.
Make those changes and add...
To a year.
To six months. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wardlow. Any discussion? Commissioner Johnston?
What, what area are we talking about? Are we talking about Core Commercial here? No, we're talking about Commercial and Residential.
Yes, ma'am, "In any residential or commercial district as defined in this article."
So we're talking about two warnings per year for a residential area?
One, you know, you get one every six months.
And again, this is distinguished from the findings. This is, this is a warning.
Mr. Mayor, in case in point, you just lowered the DBC lower in that district.
In the residential.
So, you know, the...
Okay. Any other discussion? Call to roll.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi? Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
No.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Following up with subsection three on page nine, this is your present disturbing noise standard, simply brought forward into this section to make more sense. It would read, "A complaint of disturbing noise may be made when the location of the complaint is beyond one hundred feet of the property line of a..." In fact, this Commercial District needs to change to Commercial or Residential District Sound Source. Sorry, I have it on.
We're adding Residential District?
Yes, ma'am, on page...
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with that.
We're just saying.
Sure. Sure, and there's more. It goes on. In fact, "A complaint of disturbing noise may be made when the location of the complaint is beyond one hundred feet of the property line of a commercial or residential property sound source. Additionally, a complaint of disturbing noise..." Actually, I, I need to back up because changing the Core Commercial District, this language taken from your current ordinance makes less sense.
A commercial, what you would do is, Sean, Commercial or Residential.
Right, but you...
You'd have to put the word Core in there.
But don't you also have to add Commercial or Core?
This is different than Core.
I know, but this is where you're making the complaint from.
You know, I, you're, you're right there because the next section allows any distance when it's a residential property. You would keep Commercial District in there because this, the, the way this is written in your current ordinance, if it's, if it is a Commercial District property, you must be a hundred feet away. If it is another residential property, that restriction does not apply. So the, the current wording would stand. It's, let me read the whole thing, please. "A complaint of disturbing noise may be made when the location of the complaint is beyond one hundred feet of the property line of a Commercial District property sound source. Additionally, a complaint of disturbing noise may be made when the location of the complaint is a residential property and the location of the sound source is a residential property or a commercial property that was a residential property as of September one, two thousand, at any distance from each other. A decibel meter measurement is not required to determine disturbing noise. An investigating officer shall issue a citation if the complaint suffers disturbing noise within the boundaries of its property. The investigating officer may issue a warning. If in his judgment, a warning is sufficient to cease the violation, there shall be no more than a total of one warning per offending person or establishment. And for the sake of consistency, I guess you would add, "In a six-month period."
Sean, what's the significance of September first, two thousand?
As I understand it, Commissioner, that was done by a prior commission to, to target a particular property. a particular property.
Okay.
Which, if I was sitting in this chair, I would not have ever recommended that the commission do.
All right. Do we need to modify that?
I, I would strike it.
Strike it. Okay. I, I would agree with that.
Can we include that in, in, in the, in the motion?
I, I would then, the, the language would read, as you go on, after additionally, "Additionally, a complaint of disturbing noise may be made when the location of the complaint is a residential property and the location of the sound source is a residential property."
Period.
"At any distance from each other."
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wickley?
Why was that put in there? Do you have any?
It's my understanding it was done for the ongoing dispute at the end of Duval Street.
And that was to resolve, to help? Resolve that dispute?
I, I do not know, but I do know that when challenged, I believe, let's see, probably seven years ago, six years ago, that it was determined that the particular commercial property that was a residential property as of September 1, 2000, was actually not a residential property at that time, as illustrated by records produced in a code enforcement hearing. So, I believe it's largely inapplicable today.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, what is, what does this do to the neighbor?
I'm sorry?
What does this do to the neighbors?
Well, if I recall Judge Overby's ruling, or, and I wasn't, I'm not the, the code enforcement attorney on it, but if I recall correctly, there was a determination made that the commercial property wasn't a residential property on that date, so the purpose for putting this in essentially evaporated.
So, what, what protection does the neighbor get now? Does she have?
The same as anybody else would.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Lopez?
I got to ask this, so if this, if, if this is approved at this point, what does this do to that? Because right now, neither of these two neighbors have a serious concern with where we are, but I don't want, if you understand, what does this do to change anything? Does this change anything if we, if we eliminate that?
No.
Any other questions? So, do we, we don't have a motion yet, though, do we?
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve with the changes you recommended, scratching that date?
And the, the rest of what I had read through.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Wardlow. Any discussion? Call to roll.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickley?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
Yes.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, on the section, subsection A, that immediately follows, as well as subsections one, two, subsection B, essentially for the next page and a half, I suggest striking that language because it's unnecessary, given the other language that you have approved. This was standards for residential districts that you had in, had approved on first reading. Now that you have the disturbing noise standard included, my attempt for this page and a half was to do so in a different manner, so it's unnecessary.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Yanis. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, sir.
We're still in section 26 dash 192?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
No, 192.
You are. This was, this was all the language that was constructed for residential districts.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call to roll.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Wickley?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
Yes.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, you would need to, the commission would need to renumber the current paragraph three that starts with, if a complaint arises regarding multi-story structures, that would have to become a four, again, to have your numbering correct. That would be four?
Okay. Move.
Motion approved by Commissioner Wickley, seconded by Commissioner Johnston. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here or none, motion passes.
Regarding section 26 dash 193, I do not note, I do not note any alterations to that section.
Is there just all the way to 14 and 23, right, to 26, 194?
Yes, sir, on 26, 194, citation procedures and penalties.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait, 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 where, where?
No motion necessary, Commissioner.
There's no changes.
Just a recognition that, that nothing changes between readings on that particular section.
194?
No, it's 1, 26 to 194.
Yes, sir, on 193.
193.
No changes.
Moving to section 26, 194, citation procedures and penalties. If you move to the final section, which is subsection E, it currently reads, "Any person who violates the provision of this chapter," it goes on, "that's subject to the penalties as provided in section 1 dash 15 of this code." That's the, that's the procedure where they could be cited in, in county court. My suggestion, after hearing the commission discussion at the last meeting, is to strike 1 dash 15 and replace it with, in chapter two, Article Six, Division Two of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Key West. What that does is make violations of this code subject to enforcement in a special magistrate proceeding.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion approved by Commissioner Yanis, seconded by Commissioner Lopez. Any discussion?
Yeah, question.
Commissioner Wickley?
Sean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then if the magistrate rules, is there a challenge to that ruling?
Is there a challenge to the special? Yes, sir, there's an appeal provision to Circuit Court.
Okay, so it would go to Circuit Court?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, just like any other challenge from a code enforcement proceeding.
Okay, okay. So, this, this previous section, 1.15, was that, there was that catch-all section of the code that, it's like a $500 fine or something?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So, the penalty could be greater?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here or none, motion passes?
No.
Turning to.
Let me, um, this was the section, this section 26, 194, that Mr. Weaver had a, a concern about. Was that resolved? You asked that question, didn't you, Billy? Mr. Weaver's question about section 26, 194? Yeah, Rose Lane. That was the question you had asked. Okay, so he has, he has a remedy.
Okay.
Or he has a complaint, rather, not a remedy, but, okay. Okay.
Next one?
Returning to section 26 dash 195, liability citizen suit is currently entitled. We had, you had discussion last meeting with respect to who should be cited. You wanted the individual responsible for the volume cited, rather than the, the person creating it if they had no or minimal control over the actual volume. Therefore, I would suggest striking the words maker or creator and adding the words individual controlling or responsible for maintaining the volume. So, the sentence would read, "The individual controlling or responsible for maintaining the volume of unreasonably excessive noise and the operator and/or owner of the premises that is the sound source shall be subject to liability for violation of this article," and it continues on.
Does operator translate to manager?
Yeah, manager.
Make the assumption?
Yeah, if, if, if it is determined, that code office is going to determine who's, who's responsible for it.
Okay, does manager?
It gives, it gives discretion. What, what Jim Young will tell you, and I believe he told you at the last hearing, he still needs the discretion to determine who to cite and who's ultimately responsible, because it could very well be the performer himself or herself is, is the one controlling the, the sound.
Right, so Jim's going to seek out the title?
Mm-hmm.
Of the person?
He's going to seek out the person responsible.
Any other questions?
What section is that again?
It's in section 26 dash 195. Yes, sir.
Can we?
Well, yeah, that, that, Mr. Mayor, you might want to put it, what, the manager on duty. It's typical in a, in a restaurant and bar business that the person is the manager on duty.
I would agree with that.
Called the MOD.
Manager of the day, manager on duty.
What if that individual is not responsible for controlling the sound?
If he's the manager of the properties, he charges the sound.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Yanis?
Sean?
Yes, sir.
But this brings forth this, this, this other sentence, and I quote, "If prosecuted jointly," well, now you're going to prosecute the operator or the maker or the MOD, how are you going to prosecute him jointly? I, I, I think, I think that's redundant and maybe confusing, to be honest with you. So, now you, you go a guy in there and he says, hey, who's in charge? Who's the MOD? Fred. Okay, we're going to prosecute him, but we're also going to prosecute the guitar player? I, I, I'm just not, not seeing that.
Well, it might be instructive if Jim tells you exactly what goes on in the field when he goes to, to make one of these citations.
Yes, please.
Provide a little context for you. Well, before I do that, on page seven, section 26, 192, that's what we would be citing for, the prohibition of unreasonably, unreasonably excessive noise. And if you read that prohibition of the excessive noise, it's unlawful for any person to permit, cause, allow, amplify, create, emit, or sustain unreasonably excessive noise on any property. So, that gives us the discretion. If it's a, a single guitar player that controls his own amp, and we get the complaint and it's over the decibels, he gets the notice of code violation with the time to come into compliance. If it's MOD playing tape music, he gets it.
Did you finish, Yanis? Commissioner Wickley?
Suppose it's one of these, like a chain restaurant and the owner's not there. You know, I don't know, Fat Tuesday, maybe.
Pardon? In those cases, Commissioner, it's.
Burger Fry.
The owner is always cited, maybe not with a notice of code violation, but we send him a formal letter notifying him, "There was a code violation at your property or your business, and it's subject to any fines or liens that can be accessed against the property."
Even if it's a corporation that owns it, like you said, the Burger Fry?
Yes, sir. We've done it with Hart.
Johnny Rockets now.
Yes. We have to do that under 162. All property, or all liens or fines that could arise have to be assessed on the property. So, if we do it to the guitar player, he's gone next month.
Yeah, and he might be upset with the owner of the place and do it on purpose.
Yes. That's happened.
I mean, and then, that happens.
That's just a warning, though. I mean, he'll be gone.
I, I think with that section that we would cite, along with the liability section, it gives us the discretion where we're not just zeroing, zeroing in on the property owner or the manager on duty. And keep in mind, Mr. Mayor, keep in mind that this is the citation. It's not a finding that one of these individuals violated the ordinance. Certainly, those folks can come in, explain the particular situation to the special magistrate before a finding is made, but I, I think what your code enforcement or your code compliance department needs is the discretion to identify who is responsible for the violation. To specify one individual by title may not give them the discretion that they need.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Yanis?
Thank you, sir. Look, I, I agree with Commissioner Rossi here. Most, a lot of us have owned businesses, have been involved in businesses, with the exception of a guy playing on a street corner, which we don't allow amplified music anyways, I, I think that the way this should be set up is that it is the responsibility of the person who is running the business establishment to make sure that that musician maintains the level. He becomes a de facto employee. And at that point, this was going to happen. Now you're going to go in, you're going to cite the guitar player, you're going to cite the owner, and the one's going to get it was him, no, it was his, his responsibility. I'm just saying, I think that's a very slippery slope here. I think that the, the owner of the business is like anything else. If Mr. Rossi allows, you know, a bartender to serve an underage drinker, they're going to come after him. And I, and I really, really think that this should go, the responsibility, whoever is the owner, or whoever is the manager of that business, the onus should be on them, and they should get the citation, because if, if a guy plays the guitar too loud, and you go turn the volume down, he turns it back up, you fire the guy. I'm, I really think that needs to be looked at.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I, I think Commissioner Wardlow hit it on the head about corporations and stuff, and, you know, an owner is not always going to be there. And if the owner's agent is there, it's definitely the manager on duty. I mean, in my place of business, to use me as an example, I cannot be there 24 hours a day. So, I have an agent that's in charge, and that's who Jim's going to go cite anyhow, right or wrong, buddy? You're going after the head cheese of the property.
I'm going after the money. Where, where, where do we collect our liens and fines?
From the manager on duty.
From the property, from the property itself, okay? In the cases we have cited, we have cited the actual musician, the band that was playing, the manager on duty, and the property owner. So, it all depends. Every circumstance will, will not be the same.
Mr. Mayor, may I make, make a statement here? If a property owner has the property leased out to somebody else, how are you going to, to cite an absentee property owner?
We have to follow the law. Under 162, Florida statute that covers code enforcement, code compliance throughout the state, we have to follow that law to the letter. So, we have to issue a notice to the property owner, because we can't put a.
So, let me use a case in point. So, you tell me you're going to cite the Hogsbreast Saloon down here at Front Street, okay? That's a HTA property, so that you're going in to cite HTA?
We would issue a notice to HTA as the property owner. Here's a copy of the notice of code violation, and any fines or liens arising out of this case will be assessed against the property. And that's how we normally get compliance. Yeah, you would be amazed that when an owner of a property is cited for something, for merely owning the property, the compliance of their tenant is usually rather swift, because the owner immediately goes to the tenant, and compliance is often achieved in that manner.
Mr. Mayor, would you indulge me 10 seconds, five seconds? When you get pulled over by Florida Marine Patrol, the Coast Guard, the first thing they ask you is, "Who's the captain of the boat?" In a bar business, there is a captain of the boat. I'm telling you, they're not worried, if you're not wearing a life jacket, they're worried about the captain of the boat. And I'm just going to say again, I think that the onus falls on whoever is the manager of the property, not the musician. of the property, not the musician. Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Lopez?
I've got a question, actually, going along with what Commissioner Yanis is saying too now, because if we actually, if we do go ahead and cite the musician, or, hey, it could be the musician, it could be somebody that's just making excessive noise within the place, somebody having a brawl or yelling and screaming, disturbing the peace in that manner, whatever the case might be. Fact is that if you cite the MOD and send notice to the owner as well, then it doesn't matter who you cite, because the ultimately responsible party is the MOD and/or the owner of the property. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. And remember, we're issuing a notice of code violation and giving them a time to come into compliance. We're not out there writing a ticket and you're going to overbeat tomorrow.
Right.
So it's a...
Let him finish this.
I'm sorry, sir. What was the question?
Finish your answer there.
It's a paper trail that we establish for the repeat complaints we get.
Any other question?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Rossi.
No disrespect to the magistrate, because he's a very good friend of mine, but what happens if he's in a bad mood that day? I mean, I'm just being the devil's advocate here, you know, it should...
Okay. Commissioner Wardlow?
So if this is the state law, then we basically have to go with it?
Yes, sir. Under issuing notices.
That's automatically in the ordinance anyway.
Well, he's, with respect to the owner of the property, it seems where we're getting hung up is, who, you walk in the door, who's in control? You know, I know Commissioner Rossi says manager on duty. If you put manager on duty in here, and that's not the person that's responsible for creating the or maintaining that volume, and again, we're talking about music, and it may be something completely different from that, but you've tied the hands of your code enforcement department by simply saying the individual controlling or responsible for maintaining the volume, then you've given them a broad enough ability to find out who it is without a particular title.
But we can't change it if it's a state law.
That part is not the state law. It's the following part about the owner of the premises.
Got you. The owner would be charged, that's the state law.
What you have in place presently says, what you approved on first reading, actually, I think this is actually, this is already in your ordinance, the maker or creator of unreasonably excessive noise and the operator and owner. The only thing, the only thing that changed in the liability section was the definition of unreasonably excessive noise. So again, if there's not a motion on this tonight, what stands is the following language, "The maker or creator of unreasonably excessive noise and the operator and/or owner of the premises that are its sounds or shall be subject to liability for violations," this article, and it goes on from there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Wardlow, do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Commissioner Weekly. Commissioner Weekly?
So what this does, it gives code compliance, they can cite the musician, they can cite the manager, they can cite anyone else, if they have a sound control person, that person can be cited also, is that correct? And then notification is sent, if it's an absentee owner, notification is sent to the owner of the property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The individual controlling or responsible for maintaining the volume and the owner.
And if we approve this this way, that's how this will go down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just wanting to be clear.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate, man, you have a lot of absentee owners on Duval Street. I mean, you know, we used to take some point of the 801. I don't know if Jim spotted, but you have an 80 or 90-year-old woman owns that property.
I think the city attorney can clarify this. The owner is also going to get cited. The person that is causing the noise is being cited.
Yes, sir.
But it also goes to the owner.
The notice, the owner's being noticed if there was an infraction.
Okay, then you need to put the word noticed in.
Commissioner, that's pursuant to, as Jim referenced earlier, that's pursuant to state statute, chapter 162.
All right, we're getting off on what it really is.
Just real quick, a point. They just recently did that to an issue down on Front Street, didn't you, with the lounge that was making all the noise, you noticed Cohen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I mean, they were having, there was an issue with sound, the owner was noticed, he went in there and corrected it right away. So that's why the owner's noticed.
Came down from Miami.
Any other discussion? Call to roll, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
I don't know.
That was a quick answer for you, Commissioner.
Jeez.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
Nope.
Mayor Kate?
Yes, motion passes.
Again, staying in that, Mr. Mayor, staying in that same section 26-195, at a prior commission meeting, a number of you asked me to provide language about a violation for multiple unsubstantiated complaints. This is the proposed language. It would be subsection D of 26-195, "Multiple unsubstantiated complaints. An unsubstantiated complaint is one to which a noise control officer has responded and found either no evidence of any noise or a sound that is 10 decibels or more below the standards for a finding of a violation of unreasonably excessive noise. The noise control officer shall explain his or her findings to the complaint and detail the relevant standards for determining a violation as specified by the city code. It shall be a violation of this article subjecting an individual to the provisions of chapter two, article six, division two of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Key West, for any individual to make three or more unsubstantiated complaints within a one-month period."
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Yanis?
How about if they do two a month for 12 months?
Again, at the pleasure of the commission, whatever the standard, much like changing the six-month standard earlier, whatever is the pleasure of the commission. This was put in there to give you something to discuss in response to your previous request.
Mr. Mayor, can we add to that, or six total? So that, you know, you do three in one month and three in the next month, you're done. It has to, they're done. I mean, there has to be a point where you just, this guy can't complain three times a month for the next 10 years. I mean, that defeats, I think that defeats the purpose, to be honest with you.
City Attorney?
Sure. Or six total, and Commissioner Yanis, is that in a 12-month period?
And then, okay, and then 12 over the end of the universe.
Will, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I like, the motion I'd like to make is three in one month or six forever.
I have a question. Does this exist? I mean, does that happen right now? People are just making random complaints?
Sure, sure.
They are? Within the core district? Is that right? Jim? Jim, is that right? Do we have these random, repeated complaints?
We receive complaints from some individuals more than once, twice, four times, yes.
Are they legitimate complaints?
Under the current ordinance, no, because we couldn't get a measurement over 75 dB. We have a complaint now that you might all have heard about with the chickens. The gentleman's complaining again, and he wants to go to court, so...
Mr. Mayor, can I say something to the diocese here? That there, that's protection for a business. If somebody moves in, is this for the court, entertainment district, or is this the residential?
It's for every district.
Okay, what happens if somebody moves in across the street, say, for my operation? Okay, I've been there 30-some years. Now somebody moves in there and decides, "Hey, I don't like you because of the music sir," or Mike Morowski down there at the Hemingway House, "I'm going to start complaining, and I'm going to complain, and I'm going to complain, and I'm going to complain." That's not fair. It's like moving into a jet port and complaining about jet noise. You know what you're moving into. It's only fair. I mean...
So, Commissioner Yanis, start a motion. Three?
Three in a month or six over a lifetime.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Well, let me get this motion clarified.
Okay, three in a month or six over a five-year period?
How many year period?
Five.
Six over a five-year period?
Six over five years, I don't like that.
Well, if you, in other words, if you make three, right, you make three, and then you can only make two more in the next four years and 10 months, that at least gives you some kind, well, I mean, you have to create something, by the way, don't say chicken, because ladies hungry, you know, but...
I think, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Yanis, I, you need to narrowly tailor this, so you're not, again, as noted by Commissioner Rossi, harassing the business and taking unnecessary time from code enforcement. And again, you know, you don't want to discourage legitimate complaints, that's why that 10, that 10 was put in there as far as a decibel meter reading, too.
Three, I think Commissioner Rossi's on it, three in a month, five in a year. Will that work for the diocese?
I think that's fair.
Three in six months and five in one year?
I made that motion, yeah, I wanted to amend the motion.
Okay, that's the motion, three in three months, five in one year. Do I have a second?
I'll start it.
Second by Commissioner Rossi.
Question.
Commissioner Weekly.
Is that against the same establishment? Or because, you know, somebody could, somebody could live somewhere and make a motion against an establishment, that establishment changes ownerships, or the person moves somewhere else and has some issue, so, I mean, I think you're...
I have no problem with that either. I mean, if you have somebody that made five complaints within one year, I mean, like Commissioner Johnson said, does it happen a lot? No, but when it happens, it usually points that you have, excuse me, sir, it usually points that you have one person that's just using the complaint system for some unreasonable, for something unreasonable. That's my take on it.
So you're going to leave your motion the same?
I disagree.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the motion stands.
Limit somebody's right.
All right. Any other discussion?
So did we get a clarification on that? Is it per location, per business?
The way this currently reads, it says it's a violation for any individual to make three or more unsubstantiated complaints within a one-month period or five total in a year.
So it's not location?
No, it's individual, right, it's individual specific.
Unsubstantiated.
And again, unsubstantiated is if there's no sound or a dB reading 10 decibels below what the standard is. So if it's a close call each time they go out there, it's not going to be an unsubstantiated complaint.
And that gets back, Mr. Mayor, that gets back to what I was saying. If somebody moves in next to a bar in the core commercial district, it should be, I think, you might want to make this different for residential versus the core commercial district.
Okay, we got a motion.
And there is a protection, too, built in here. You know, there's a requirement that the noise control officer explain to that individual what the standards are for that particular section. I mean, there's the education element when they go out on the street and talk to this person, so they're fully informed what the requirements are, what the sound reading was, so that the next time they come, they know exactly what the standard is. If they go out and hear it's, you know, 12 below dB, and it's louder next time, they know, okay, I can go ahead and make a complaint, and it's likely not unsubstantiated. So there's an education element to it, and it's not just an all-out finding that this person's making an unreasonable complaint.
Okay, the motion stands. Any discussion?
I've got a question, Sean.
Go ahead.
Or Jim, I'm not sure which one to direct this at, but if, dealing with the issues that I'm hearing from Commissioners Rossi and Yanis, could we specify that this individual making the unsubstantiated complaints against a particular entity, I mean, with that? Help me out here, because I'm not even sure with what I'm trying to say myself, quite frankly.
Yes, again, it's, this is a, it's a policy decision by the commission. You know, an individual to make three or more unsubstantiated complaints against any property location within a, you know, against the same property location within a one-month period.
I'd like to offer that as a friendly amendment.
Fine. See, I've had people...
They do that, yeah.
They do that. Listen, I've had people that have been ejected out of the bar and have called in bomb scares, you know that, for being a fire department.
Do we have an...
So you're going to make that amendment? Commissioner Lopez, too?
That would be against the same property.
Against the same property, add into that. Okay, you approve that for the second. Any other discussion? Commissioner Weekly?
What is the exact motion we're voting on?
Could you repeat it then?
Sure. Here's the language, "Multiple unsubstantiated complaints. An unsubstantiated complaint is one to which a noise control officer has responded and found either no evidence of any noise or a sound that is 10 decibels or more below the standard for a finding of violation of unreasonably excessive noise. The noise control officer shall explain his or her findings to the complainant and detail the relevant standards for determining a violation as specified by the city code. It shall be a violation of this article subjecting an individual to provisions of chapter two, article six, division two of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Key West, for any individual to make three or more unsubstantiated complaints against the same property within a one-month period or five total complaints in a year."
Okay.
You said one-month period, three-month, six-month period?
Three, one month.
Three in one month.
And five total.
Five in one year, okay. All right, call to roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
So it gives them that, that way they can do it every quarter. Yes.
I'm calling down your...
Commissioner Yanis?
Yes.
Mayor Kate?
Yes, motion passes.
I didn't want to do this.
This is on my list, brother.
One a quarter. That's okay, I've got, I've got, I've got all the...
Okay, all right, next. City Attorney?
You can take all the readings you want. You can take all the readings you want.
The only open items, I believe, that you have discussed that have not been addressed with those amendments are buffer properties, if you want, any lower dB, or some sort of grandfathered clause for businesses in zoning districts that immediately adjoin the core commercial districts.
I'd like to lower, I'd like to lower the buffer areas by five decibels.
So a motion to lower that by 10 decibels on a buffer area?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
The motion was to lower the decibel level by five decibels on buffering properties.
So, let me, let me make sure...
Per Sean's, yeah, language.
We'd have to amend this slightly, because this language was written at a time where we had only two districts and did not have the core commercial area. Mr. Mayor, if I might respectfully make the suggestion, it's 9:30, there are two areas that are going to take just a little bit of revision, perhaps we could take, perhaps we could take a five-minute recess, and I can come back with some specific language for you.
Okay. Five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. We'd lose Clayton?
Terry?
And Terry.
Time out.
Terry, go ahead.
Oh. No. Commissioner Johnson, also. Oh, you can answer a question while, uh, we're waiting on that, is, uh, the Green Parrot, does that fall, what district does that fall in?
That, I believe, is in the HRO district, and I came up with some additional language based upon, uh, what Commissioner Two had said earlier today.
Okay.
No, he's in the HR, is he in HR?
He is, that, that property...
I was done that he was going to Petronia to White.
It doesn't, the district does not extend all the way to White. Don can tell you, the district goes out, but I, again, I don't wanna make it about one particular location.
Right.
I'll give you some, some language that, that's broader for those historic... Sorry?
You have eight oh one?
I'll give you some language for those, uh, historic properties.
Okay, I was just talking about that while we were waiting on other commissioners to come up. Okay, you get the wording?
Sure. This would be, this language is intended to create a, a buffer, um, between core commercial, commercial, and residential districts. Uh, it's similar to the language I previously provided to the, the commission, but it includes , uh, different districts. The DBA and DBC levels listed above shall be reduced by five for any property located in a commercial district or cur- core commercial district that shares a zoning boundary line with a commercial or residential district. So, if you're in core commercial and you immediately abut a commercial district, your DBA and DBC on that property will reduce by five. That way, you, you try to transition between those properties. If you are in a commercial district and you adjoin a residential district, your level, and again, immediately adjoin, these are properties, uh, yes, contiguous properties, thank you, sir, uh, your DBs would be reduced by five, so you attempt to create a, a small buffer line, uh, for the immediately adjoining neighbor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask him a question, sir?
Commissioner Yanis, yes.
Okay, so, so where does that line fall in relationship to Duval Street moving from the north side south? Where's the...
HRCC one...
And two.
Ceases at Petronia Street on the north side of Duval at Petronia. And, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong on the zoning, uh, line designations.
You're correct. So... So...
From down there.
So, I'm sorry, so, so pursuant to what Commissioner Rossi asked, that does not affect neither the eight oh one nor Green Parrot?
I have, I'll have some additional language with respect to that. This, uh, I'll give you an example. Let's move out of the, the core commercial area, um, and go out to the CG zoning district. Um, the, all the hotels along the backside of, of the boulevard, okay? That runs along there, it's, CG is a commercial district. Uh, that CG district immediately abuts, uh, single-family residences, the, the SF residential district. The DB and DBC levels for those commercial properties that immediately abut the residential district is reduced by five, with the intent of, of lowering the noise for those buffer properties. Same applies to, um, let's go out here to, uh, Caroline Street, okay?
Okay.
Um, where you go, whatever the, the line is, where that, that last core commercial property is located, where it abuts a commercial property, that core commercial property sound DB is reduced by five.
I, I understand that part. What I'm asking is, where are those lines?
They're drawn on a map.
It, it is getting late, Mr. Smith, I, I'll accept that.
The, the, it would ser- it would serve to affect only those adjoining properties where there's a boundary line, and it's, and it's, it's on maps that are your official zoning maps, so they're, they're very easy to distinguish.
Let me rephrase the question. How does this affect the Green Parrot, the eight oh one bar, that have been in existence for a long time? Or, or, Mr. Smith, are, is that gonna be part of a grandfather clause?
I have, yes, sir, I, I have a, a second clause that would be applicable to places such as, as those. However, however, this clause would also be applicable, uh, to those properties, and that, what I'll suggest to you is this, I'll do them together, and you can vote on them separately. Um, I suggest the following as well.
Mr. Morgan have a map?
Okay, let me, go ahead.
Let me suggest the following to you as well. Any commercial establishment that has held an entertainment license for at least the past five years with two or less findings of violation, which is located in a zoning district that immediately adjoins the HRCC one or HRCC two district, shall be considered core commercial and thus subject to the elevated noise levels based upon past use and proximity to those other districts. So, if you have held an entertainment license for five or more years, you have had two or less findings of violation, again, these are just a suggested number to, to come up with, uh, the his- the historic precedence for allowing a grandfathered use or an elevated use. Um, you immediately adjoin these two core commercial areas. Your level is subject to the core commercial standard, okay? However, keep in mind that if you now take that property and it's located, say, in the HRO zoning district, that immediately adjoins a commercial district, so their DBs would be reduced by five. So, they don't get the full pleasure of HRCC one or two, they get HRC one and two minus five, 'cause again, you're trying to create that buffer because it is in a district other than HRCC one and HRCC two. And again, I, I know it, it might be a little complicated, but what I'm attempting to give you is two things. One, a buffer between different zoning districts, so you don't have one district or one property that plays at, you know, eighty-four with a property next to it that has a lower standard. And two, pulling in historic businesses, but recognizing those historic businesses are not located inside your core commercial district.
What, what is a list of those historic businesses that we're trying to protect?
I don't know. And again, I, I do not want to, uh, make this, and nor should I, I, I suggest the commission doesn't make this about any particular business. I think you set a standard, and those that meet the standard, uh, fall within this, this, um, exception, um, but I, I don't know a number. Uh, I'm trying to, to address a, a commission question in a way that I believe is fair and equitable without increasing, uh, the volume in an immediate, in a, a district that immediately joins the, the core commercial districts. And again, you could scrap both of the, these ideas, these are just final things, tweaking the, the, uh, the ordinance to, to one, create a buffer, and two, recognize, um, some of these historic businesses, if they in fact exist.
Well, we obviously know if somebody's got an entertainment license outside of these defined areas, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Who, who are they?
I, the first one I thought of when I, when I wrote this, is the, when you hit, um, Petronia Street?
Yes.
And you're on the north side of Petronia Street?
Right.
You have the eight oh one that's on the south side in the HRCC three zoning district, which would have a lower sound level under the ordinance as it's written today.
Right.
And then, the Green Parrot was referenced earlier, and I talked to John, John's in the HRO zoning district, which immediately adjoins the, um, HRCC one zoning district.
But the qu- with the five, uh, decibel buffer, that would drop there, decibels five?
Yes, sir.
So, there are actually five decibels less than...
HRCC one.
Mr. Mayor, but, but, but we already lowered the decibels for HRCC one anyways?
No.
The C scale?
No, we increased it.
Okay.
That was commercial, that was commercial and residential, but not core commercial.
Okay, commercial, okay, that's, okay.
My concern is that them five less decibels when they're right there at the district, you know?
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I can't support that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Lopez?
Can we make exceptions or considerations for those properties that are in pro- close proximity to these, to these districts?
That's what Sean has.
Yeah, I, I would, again, those are two separate, yet somewhat interrelated, um, amendments. They can stand alone. You know, you can, you can not have a buffer, uh, between zoning districts, and you can grandfather business, or likewise, you can have, and I, I don't even like the word grandfather, quite frankly, um, you could have, you know, this, um, this recognition for these historic businesses, um, and not have a buffer, or likewise, have a buffer and not recognize them. Again, this is the pleasure of the commission, I'm just trying to provide you something that I believe is, is defensible to meet, um, the suggestions or the, the request earlier.
It's defensible, and then...
Just, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, and, and Sean, I'd also like to know, too, though, if, um, yeah, if, if it's defensible, but, um, is there a way to, to make that commensurate to the current owners? Well, yeah, I, I understand that, that's what grandfathering does. I, I, I'm not, well...
Yeah, I...
Does that, does that tend to overcomplicate it?
A, a little bit, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just trying to, trying to serve the...
You know, and, and the other, the other thing you could do is, is pass, pass this, you could pass this ordinance, uh, and always bring back a specific revision, should you find that to be an issue with the enactment of this current regulation.
Sean, could you, could you get us a list of those businesses with an entertainment license that fall into those specific zones?
I can, but I certainly would, um, suggest that you act this evening and not postpone a vote on the entire ordinance, just for those possible amendments.
Right.
I can bring those back, and you can have those, those amendments done in two readings.
Great, okay, yeah, I'd like to see those.
I, I would see that we could have the, the grandfathered-in part, but the buffer, I think, might take some, rather than impact businesses that haven't been a problem in the past by passing this ordinance, uh, and then come back with the buffer if that's needed in the future.
I'd like to see information, though, on both. I'd like to see information on the grandfather, too, because are we talking about two places? Are we talking about thirty? I, I'd like to know what we're talking about, and who we're impacting. Yeah, yeah, that's just it, you know, let's, let's see what kind of...
At least you got Green Parrot, eight oh one bar, La Di Da. So, I mean, these businesses have, have a good record.
Your, your best course of action is to, to have that firm data upon which to make a decision. As I've said many times throughout this process, the, the worst way to, to write any ordinance is, is on the fly.
Right.
I sense we're talking about all of them in my district.
Yeah. That's right. What about World City Yobst? I mean, that's all closed up.
All of them.
Well, but still, you know?
Okay. What's the pleasure?
What do you want?
I'll make a motion to approve.
As, as amended?
Yes.
The entire...
Exactly how you have it.
Oh, wait, wait a second.
Without your two?
I don't know where we're, where we're voting on.
Yeah.
Like you have it, and then you're gonna bring us back to properties on it?
I believe we've completed all of the amendments, unless a commission member has something else, and if the commission does not wanna act and get more information on, on those two suggestions, then you would move to approve the ordinance in its entirety, which would be the second and final reading. Any further amendments would come back then stand alone for two readings.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, ordinance.
Wait a second.
You're making a motion to approve the ordinance as is amended?
With the amendments.
With the amendments, except for those, and one quick question before we second that, will that impact the, the businesses that are already...
Right, do we have that grandfathering?
Yeah, go ahead, that's, we're on the same page here, the question is, will that impact the businesses and their operation as they're operating right now?
Well, they, they would be operating at the exact same standard that exists...
Today.
Before, today, 'cause keep in mind, the only thing that you've done with this ordinance is impact HRCC one and HRCC two with, uh, higher, uh, DB limits, and then you have added, um, a DBC scale in residential and, um, commercial districts. What it may do is impact those businesses because you have lowered, uh, you've put in a lower C scale.
Right, that's for my concern, 'cause we, with only two decibels, whereas in the commercial district, HRCC one and two is nine. So, I don't want these businesses to get in trouble while we're still trying to work out, which are good businesses, and they haven't been. I would like to hear from you, uh, John, just, 'cause I know this is directly gonna affect you, and we not, our goal is not to hurt the businesses.
Uh, I just wanna say that I'm, I'm very impressed that you're going to this length to, uh, to make historic properties, uh, still viable. Um, the property that I own, um, if we're talking about ten years or five years, um, if, if the corporation changed in a period less than five years, how would this be reflected in this ordinance that you wanna pass tonight?
I would say continuously running business.
Okay, that's what I'm, in other words, we reformed our corporation three years ago under a different LLC, and I wanna make sure that this, something like this, doesn't fall through the cracks. That was my only...
Yeah.
All right, thank, thank you.
You know, realistically, the Green Parrot is, is on the list for never being cited, never having complaints. So, why would we think, if we took some time and did this right, that there would be new complaints that came, you know, in the next couple of weeks? Uh, they do business right, you know, as does La Di Da, as does eight oh one, I, I, you know?
No, I understand, I agree.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Johnson, if I may, so are we voting on a motion to lower the buffer zones by five decibels?
Pardon me?
No.
No, no, neither one of those, neither one of those last two suggestions, that Sean, we were asking for additional information for our next...
Thank, thank you very much.
So, we got a motion from Commissioner Weekly?
Mr. Mayor?
Amy Wardlow?
On the ordinances with the amendments that we've already done. Before, before a motion, yes, 'cause I wanna, I wanna, um, bring back discussion on, on the plainly audible.
We have a motion on the floor, so...
Well, the one in a second, I don't think.
We don't have a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
With discussion?
Seconded by Commissioner Yanis with discussion.
Well...
Okay, Commissioner Weekly?
Okay, can we bring back the plainly audible? Now, when you were telling, giving us plainly audible, was that only in the commercial core district?
district?
The plainly audible, the, the disturbing noise standard is applicable in the commercial and the residential districts. It is inapplicable in the core commercial district.
Okay, is there some clarification?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
So, is the plainly audible test applicable in the commercial and residential areas?
Yes.
That's a tool?
Yes.
Okay.
As it exists today.
So plainly audible in the, I'm going to call it new, because it's, it's not new, but our new formula here, of commercial district from Petronia to the waterfront is a plainly audible test is?
Disturbing noise, yes, sir.
Is, is usable.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this motion?
I have one other question.
Okay.
That we had voted on, and I just want to clarify something, and, and I have another question while I, while I'm looking for that. And that is, if this passes tonight, and then Sean's going to bring back some additional amendments to address that particular issue, when that, you know, what we've been talking about.
I'm going to bring back, I'm going to bring back data. I'm not going to bring back any amendments. I'll leave that to individual commission members to sponsor.
You're going to bring us back something. Does that also give us an opportunity to make any other amendments to this?
No. They, they would have to be standalone.
It would have to be made tonight.
Or they, just like amendments to any other ordinance, this would be final this evening. Any future amendments to this ordinance, if it passes tonight, will require two hearings or two readings to be effective.
And those amendments that you talked about right there will require two readings and two?
Yes, sir.
To, to change. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, we're probably sure.
Getting ready to call the roll, so.
Excuse me, Mayor. We'd like to add back in on page nine, the, the language, sound source is a residential property or commercial property? That was a residential property as of September 1st, 2000.
Sorry. Could, could we go back?
Commissioner, can you say that again?
Yeah, could we, could you repeat that, please, Commissioner? Page nine?
Page nine, right in the middle of the page. It, it, it was a reference to the commercial property that was a residential property as of September 1st, 2000. I just, I need to get some more information on that.
So we want to put the 2001 date back in, September 2001. Is that a motion?
There's a motion.
Well, there's a motion on the floor already.
Yeah.
That, for the whole ordinance.
All right. Maybe we can get a clarification, as long as we can do this at our next reading, as long as I can make that motion at the next reading.
The next, the next reading would be a, a separate standalone ordinance amendment that would require two readings, similar to any grandfathering or buffer zones.
Okay, so what, what are you saying? Am I allowed to?
You, you can certainly bring that back, but again.
Okay.
It, it's, it's a separate ordinance amendment requiring two readings. If this ordinance passes tonight, it's your final ordinance. There's no third reading.
Right.
So, any other amendments or, or changes have to go through the same normal process.
Okay.
That language, that language could be brought back when you bring back those recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay. Comfortable?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'm so afraid.
Yes. Commissioner Rossi? Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
No.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Item number four, an ordinance of the city of Key West, Florida, amending chapter six of the code of ordinances entitled amusements and entertainment, division three, entitled noise control, by amending section 6-86 to amend the permit application process, providing for separability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, providing for an effective date.
Anyone want to sign up?
Gary W. Eek-Eck?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, that's the only person I have signed up for item number four.
Item four is which one?
Mister, Mister Mayor, and Commissioner, just as a, as a reminder, I know we've gone through a lot of items this evening. This particular ordinance is an update to your waiver process because you changed some, some definitions in the, it's a large measure housecleaning, because you included in your main noise ordinance that you just passed specified standards for a temporary waiver. This revision is purely housekeeping and references the temporary waiver standards that were just passed, which in fact are a lot more detailed than your sound ordinance waivers that you've been doing for a number of years. In fact, you can set specified DB levels. At present, if you pass a noise waiver, there's no limit to the, the sound. What you have passed is, is the ability to set limits on the amount of sound generated. And this just cleans it up and ties it all together.
I'm looking for approval.
Second. Motion to approve by Commissioner Rossi, seconded by Commissioner Wardlow. Any discussion?
No.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Johnston?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wardlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Weekly?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanis?
Yes.
Mayor Cates?
Yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Meeting adjourned.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to just make, make one, one statement real quick, if, if I may, and that is, you know, we, we gave in on, on some of the decibel numbers and increased those. One of the things that I want to state for the record, that if this does not work, there will be, I will work to find a way in which to bring back a more restrictive ordinance, one that may even include of, at 10 o'clock or at some time, of closing the establishment to with windows, doors, or anything like that, because we have got to get this town quieter. You know, everybody talks about the amount of letters and support that they've had from visitors here that talk about the music and, and all that, and that's, that's all well and good. But you know what? If you take a look at the TDC exit polls, one of the primary complaints that we get is community also, is how noisy this community is. So we're going to have to start looking, you either start working together to try to make this a more workable community with the visitors that we invite here, or I will try to bring back something that may be a lot more restrictive than what we have now. I just want to get that on the record.
Mayor Cates? I would like to comment as well, sir. Commissioner Weekly, I commend you for your hard work. However, I suggest that if you bring back another ordinance, that this time you don't do it without first bringing aboard those people in the entertainment industry that you neglected the first time around. Thank, thank you, sir.
First of all, I didn't have, I didn't, all right.
You, you can, can discuss this later. Meeting's adjourned.
Sean, thank you very much.